Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Great Town Council Workshop of November 28th, 2023. I'll begin with roll call. Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
I'm Counselor Chapel. Counselor Height is joining us shortly. And we have interim town manager Josh Tiffany on line over Zoom. We're here this evening to discuss amendments to the open space subdivision zoning ordinances, in particular to align with the recently enacted state statute, which was formerly known as LD 2003. Thank you Doug for, Doug, our planning directors here, and has provided a very thorough outline of what we'll be talking about tonight. It's online in the packet and it's about 14 pages long. I hope everyone's had a chance to at least kind of look it over. Doug, I like what you did here. You put all the questions in it and then at the end, which will help us get through all those tonight and keep track of things. Would you mind just giving, I know you probably can't get into all the weeds, but would you mind just giving a quick overview of what we're talking about specifically? And then we can go through the questions one by one? Just a real high level?
Sure.
Changes, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Doug Webster, Planning Director. And this is the third round, if you will, of implementing the new state statute with regards to housing. The first round, if you will, was the accessory dwelling unit adjustments, where we basically took the, in effect for a long time, accessory apartment standards and adapted those to the ADU requirements in the new statute. The second round was looking at density and affordability. And then the third round is adjusting at least the relevant portions of the subdivision ordinance, current subdivision ordinance, to bring it in line with the new state statute. The objective is also to, as I attempted to explain in my novel here, hoping to solicit some input from the council, looking forward to the future zoning with possible other types of subdivisions with the intention of utilizing the input from the council as policy guidance to help formulate the new zoning and the uses that will be proposed for the new zoning districts. And so, to a large degree, I'm very much hoping that the work, the input that the council has is going to be plug and play, if you will, for the new zoning. There are three different sort of types of questions. One type of question is some relatively minor changes, my perception, to the zoning ordinance regarding ADUs. There are some questions, some general questions regarding the subdivision ordinance. And then there's some more specific questions about residential open space subdivisions.
Yeah, and we've discussed this at ordinance advisory committee, I think, maybe three times now. We've had different conversations around it and they've had a lot of really good input. One of the, this first question about the ADU square footage was actually raised by one of the members of OAC because we weren't in alignment with common buildings, building materials are a certain length and our square footage minimum was not aligning with those building materials that are commonly used. And they've also had a lot of feedback about how open space is defined in subdivisions and their uses and how we go about identifying the purposes for those at the front end of developments, rather than worrying about how they're maintained at the end. So I think Doug, a lot of your questions capture the thoughts ordinance advisory committee has raised. So I'm glad to see that.
Sorry to interrupt. Could you, the last thing that you mentioned, the open space part, could you elaborate on that a little more? I'm not sure I understand.
So as we were talking about this, several of us realized that there are existing subdivisions in town that had certain purposes for their common spaces and then they were never actually implemented once the homeowners association was built. So they're not being used with the intent that they were outlined with.
Okay.
And then there's also been some questions about how to best situate open space and whether it needs to be tied to the current nodes of existing trails that we have and how we go about identifying those in a way that is fair to the developers at the beginning, so they're not trying to backtrack at the end of their project.
Gotcha. Yep. That's great.
Yeah. So I don't, I want to get to your questions, Doug, but I guess before we dive into those, does anyone have any concerns that they wanted to raise outside of these questions?
No, I thought the memo was, you know, well done. I appreciated the, you know, I think especially for people who aren't familiar with it, having, you know, an explanation of the acronyms and abbreviations is extremely helpful. Yeah, no, that was, I think that's, that just makes it, that just makes the whole conversation less frustrating when people can understand from the get-go what we're talking about. So I just appreciate the way you put this together.
Yeah, thanks Doug. I agree, yeah. Anyone else have something you want to raise before we get into the meat of these questions? Okay. So first up is the ADU one I referenced. Doug, you'll have to forgive me, I forget where you talk about it at length in your packet. I know the question was...
Page seven fifty to eight hundred is basically.
Page two.
Right. So the, yeah, the question's on packet page 12. The question is, does the council support increasing the maximum footprint of an ADU to 800 square feet? It's currently 750 square feet. And we made that determination, I think, last spring? It must have been springtime when we amended that to align with the ADU rules. There was a lot of back and forth about what that maximum should be. I think the intent of the council at the time was to make sure they were definitely being used as accessory units. Majority of the council at the time did not want to just see essentially a duplex built with the same size unit next to a primary residence. And that's where the 750 square foot number came from. We were told by code at the time that that was a standard measurement for, I forgot, I forgot what it was. I don't know if it was accessory apartments or...
I think that's what it was, yes.
So we were erring on the side of a conservative number to start with, understanding that we would potentially need to make some changes as stuff happened.
Well, and even shortly after that, the whole 768 square foot question came up, you know, in conversation. So we're just, I think, making the amendment we knew we'd have to make at some point.
Right. So on packet page two, Doug outlines basically what I just said a minute ago. The currently adopted maximum footprint for an ADU is 750 square feet. But most construction materials are in four-foot increments, which results in more like a 768 square foot structure. And so our 750 square foot maximum does not fit that. So do counselors support increasing the maximum to 800 square feet to account for that?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I'm fine with that also. Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
It's only 50 square feet. That's not that much.
No.
Building materials are not cheap these days.
Right. And I think Tammy noted at the time that the square footage reference is the footprint of the building and not the finished space. Is that, I believe, am I remembering that correctly?
I forget how it ended up being worded. Code is implementing that, as I point out with my number two on the bottom of page two. But I think it, the codes is trying their level best to use the existing language to be consistent with the council's intent. And my point with number two is depending on how that works as a practical matter with the permits going out the door, we may need to do some fine tuning.
Okay. And yeah, the point you're referencing on that page is talking about buildings with existing structures that might have an unfinished space that's larger than 700 square feet. So they're running into some real world issues about how to implement, how to implement the 750 or now 800 square foot maximum in those spaces.
But I would think to some extent, I mean, if it's smaller than 750 square feet, there's no issue there, right? I mean, you can build an ADU that's smaller than the 750 number.
Right, you just can't go over 800.
Pardon me, or over, less than the 800 figure, the new figure. But if you have a space that, say, is 900 square feet, if you allow for a livable space of 800 square feet to be built in that space, that seems like a reasonable solution to me. You could have a, you could have a second floor on a garage, for instance. It might be 1,000 square feet. I'm just making the number up. I would think under the ordinance, you know, we would allow 800 feet of that to be converted into, you know, a livable space. And that that would be pretty easy to...
Yeah, I guess the question for the homeowner would be, yeah, what do they do with that excess 100 square feet? Like, how does that?
What did they do with it before they had an ADU? They stored junk in it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the way I'm coming, the way I'm thinking is, you know, we're allowing the majority of it to be put to a more productive use.
Code is doing the best they can with that. And I said that George and Tammy are doing their level best to apply that. I guess I'm just respectfully pointing out to the council that it's a little bit of a moving target, as you point out, particularly for existing structures.
But why? I don't understand that.
Well, how do you, how do you handle that separate in your example? Not to, it's just ripe. If you've got an existing 1,000 square foot building, what is, what happens to that additional 200 square feet? Is that cold storage? Is there a wall there? Is there a door that goes to that space? I mean, as a practical matter, how do you create that separation between the 800 and the remaining 200?
Right. Because you can't make it a closet because that would still be part of the building footprint. Yeah.
And you don't want to wall it off so it's eliminated because that's a waste of space.
Well, you would. I mean, if you want to build an ADU, I mean, then you would wall it off and it could be cold storage. It could be something else.
Maybe there's a second set of stairs that goes up to that. There are a host of different situations, again, mostly for existing buildings.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like that's not one we're addressing tonight. You mentioned it was more of an FYI, but I guess I would just ask that you keep us surprised of whether, how often they're running into that and whether we need to move forward with amending it further. Next up was...
That was it for zoning, I think. And then there were some, starting at the bottom of page three.
Just subdivision questions?
There were some subdivision, sort of, all subdivisions. And then there were open space. Those are the three categories: zoning, general subdivision, and then open space.
I'm just jumping back and forth to the question outline you had. Okay, so the...
Provide some context?
Yeah, maybe that would help because I think there's just, there's so many different elements here.
Well, and I think anybody listening to isn't going to necessarily have read the packet.
Right, exactly.
I'm disappointed.
Yeah, if you could just give some context for each question, I mean, we've looked at it, but I think that would be helpful. I know it was helpful to organize our thoughts here.
Sure. And so I'm at the bottom of council packet page three. And the, as the councils are aware, the open space plan was adopted in March of '22. The open space committee is increasingly active. One of the long-term objectives of the open space plan is to do our level best to connect what I call the nodes of activity. Libby Hill is obviously a node. Wilkie's Beach is arguably another node. If, for example, there are one or more subdivisions that are proposed between, for those examples, between Libby Hill and Wilkie's, is there the political will to add a provision to the subdivision ordinance to require a public easement trail connection somewhere on the subdivision? Obviously, not through the middle, but somewhere on that subdivision to provide that, a link on that portion of the property with the long-term objective of connecting the different nodes. And this is dovetailed a little bit further. I don't want to get too far off track here. This is dovetailed a little bit later on with a proposal to try to beef up, if you will, the sketch plan. Sketch plan is the very first meeting for a subdivision. In sketch plan, there's a proposal, we'll get to it. There's a proposal that the importance of sketch plan to solicit input from the open space committee and the planning board at a very conceptual high level probably should take more prominence. Where there's, okay, where are the wetlands? Where's the best place to put the developed portion? Where should the open space be? And so the possible trail connection, if the council's supportive of adding that to the subdivision ordinance, is kind of part of that. Like, okay, let's look at the overall parcel. Let's look at the development constraints and let's get some broad brush input before there's hard engineering and hard money that goes towards the infrastructure.
Well, your specific question is whether we would support requiring public use trail connections for subdivisions that connect open space nodes. So I assume in relation to this specific question, we're only talking about open space subdivisions that would abut existing properties that have trails on them already? Or are we talking about...
The concept was any subdivision.
So any subdivision.
Although, I mean, that could be, that could be a derivative, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally supportive of increasing trail connections around town, especially for areas that already abut public use trails. And I know that that's a priority in our open space plan and for the open space committee. But I wonder how effective it would be for all subdivisions that don't actually abut. Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I think that, I think you have to look to the future for the answer to that.
Yeah.
Ultimately, as, as the town has developed and things fill in, there may be an opportunity to connect those. If we don't, if we don't have that built in, then someday in the future, you know, you can't go back and get that put in there. I'm all in favor of this for foot traffic. I would have some questions about ATVs and bicycles.
I assume snowmobiles also.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, I think motorized vehicles and to some extent bicycles. I think there's solutions there, but I think that they would take more work than just the foot traffic in my mind. So yeah, so I'm on, I'm on board for requiring it for all subdivisions for foot traffic.
Okay.
But then I think, like I said, I think that the motorized stuff would require a little more conversation.
I would also have some questions about, say, this was a requirement, how the public accesses those trail connections? A lot of subdivisions are built on private roads. So what does that look like? What does parking look like?
Well, trailheads and trails through are two different things.
That's, I mean, that's true. You're not going to walk through someone's backyard to get to the trail, but...
And most subdivisions are winter maintenance roads, which means they're public ways.
Yeah, but not, not all of them are, but you're right.
The vast majority of them are.
Yeah, they are.
You know, mine is, for instance, the road that I live on. So I think, but I think your point about the parking and the trailheads.
Right, like where is that access? So if you create a trail within a subdivision, is it really accessible to the public as a trail? I don't know.
I think the concept is to improve connectivity. So I mean, I wouldn't see that, you know, a trailhead or parking is something that would be necessarily mandated in all subdivisions. So let's say there's a subdivision between, you know, Libby Hill and Wilkie's Beach. They might, you know, the trail might be located such that they never go on a public way. I mean, on a road or on that particular parcel. I mean, is that, am I seeing that correctly?
I think the driving force is exactly that, the connectivity. It wasn't, that's how it started. And the communities in Maine that have been successful with a very extensive trail network have done so utilizing similar approaches.
So, I mean, the trail on a given subdivision wouldn't be a trail system in its entirety that would, people would necessarily access there. It would be part of a...
But what happens, and I know we have to look to the future, but what happens if there's a kind of lone subdivision built in a rural area and they make a public trail, but it's not yet connected to anything? What does that, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, I think they would make an easement. They would create an easement, not a trail. And as the opportunity for a trail realized, the trail would be built.
Much like we do for a subdivision with a road. So for instance, Woodcock is a good example. Woodcock goes into the end, but when you look at phase two of Woodcock, there is a right-of-way that would allow the subdivision to be connected to another road. So it's the same, Matthew's talking about the same principle.
I mean, is, could it be written like that, Doug, with the easement language, rather than... I don't know. I just, I guess I struggle with calling it a public use trail for every subdivision that's going to be built because it wouldn't necessarily be one right away. But then I think we run into the problem the OAC identified where you create these easements or the idea of what you're going to build in the future and then they don't get implemented. So I don't, I'm just struggling, I'm just struggling with that.
But he calls it a public easement, not a public trail in this memo.
Oh, I was reading public use trail connection under the question, but yeah, perhaps he did.
And that's not really any different than a right-of-way, like for the roads.
Yeah, he does say a public. Okay.
Exactly. And so in the scenario, if this, this is going to pick me up, you're trying to connect two nodes. If this is the first parcel to get subdivided, then this easement is established. And then over time, perhaps parcels number two and three trigger subdivision. And then, so you've established this link as part of your, this approval. You see, and in the end, you create the connection.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of the vision. I just, I'm just trying to think about like the practical implementation of it.
Well, I also think with subdivision, with open space subdivision, one of the things you could talk about is, you know, is there an allowance for a developer who does develop a trailhead? So in other words, if part of the subdivision, the developer is willing to develop a trailhead, it would allow access to that. Is there a credit that can be created that the developer could, you know, use? So we would encourage that.
Yeah, I like the idea of that.
Again, if you think of, if we think of Woodcock, that athletic field essentially would be a node to any trail system that's created up in that neck of the woods. And there are some other trails that cross private property that do connect with Woodcock. So yeah, I think...
Okay.
And I wouldn't be opposed to some sort of language that allowed for not having an easement if there just, obviously wasn't any opportunity, or not requiring an easement if there just obviously wasn't any opportunity for connectivity because of the, you know, the particulars of the site.
Right. I think that's come up a lot in OAC is that some sites are just not going to be amenable to every rule we're creating. So we want to have some sense of flexibility, but...
Could you give me, could you give me an example of what kind of site would prohibit any kind of a creation of a trail? I mean, I can't think of one that I would want to put that limitation on myself.
I don't want to put it as a limitation. I think, I would put it as a sort of a, you know, the presumption is...
A fail-safe?
That you can, the presumption is that you have to have this easement. But, you know, it's a rebuttable presumption, I guess, is how I would look at it.
Well, I think when someone can go to planning board and ask for a waiver if they have cause.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, so even if we had the ordinance that said that all subdivisions had to have this allowance for a trail, if there was some particular characteristic about the land that prevented that from happening, the developer could ask the planning board for a waiver. So the process does, I think, include that sort of fail-safe.
Do you agree with that, Doug?
Yes, and with the, I think, the important footnote, I tried to plant the seed in the memo, that the vision, at least at this juncture, is to increase input from open space committee. The goal is to tie together, to a certain extent, input from, very similar to public safety, I guess, for those that are familiar with land use and the planning board and subdivisions. The planning board and town staff leans on input from public safety. In this instance, the planning board would be leaning on open space. Ultimately, the planning board would be making the decision, as it's statutorily required to do, but it would be predicated on input from open space so that open space is furthering the long-term objectives of the open space plan.
This has been in the works for a long time.
Yes, yeah. Like I said, I'm generally supportive of the vision. I'm just trying to raise concerns now rather than later.
No, I don't mean to sound combative or anything, but it's just part of the conversation.
Yeah, I think we're generally, unless Marty feels differently, all in support of this requirement for a public use trail connection, so we can move on. So next up, you were discussing clarity around requirements for soil information. Does the council support clarifying the field verification for subdivisions utilizing a medium intensity soil survey? And you could talk about it more, but it sounds like we have a requirement for medium intensity soil surveys, but it's not generally being utilized. Is that...
It's not being...
Almost always waived.
Implemented, I think, the way that, and Counsel McGuire was on OAC at the time. And just after clarifying the intention, if the developer is going to, there's a medium intensity soil survey that was done by US Department of Agriculture in 1974. It's a readily available resource. The objective was that if that's going to be used as the primary soil data for the purposes of a subdivision, that there be field verification that it's accurate, and that's not really happening. So I just was, I'm advocating that we clarify the input from the soils professionals if a developer proposes to utilize the medium intensity soil survey.
Okay, so what, how would we clarify that? What would change in the current ordinance that would...
We would be more specific with the requirement, the field verification requirement in, I think it's 1318, it's the NRA NRD calculation at the very end of the subdivision ordinance.
I would definitely support, you know, requiring, being more specific that you have to verify these because, I mean, those, so Natural Resources Conservation Service maps are, you know, they're pretty general. I mean, there's lots of, you know, situations where, you know, there are small areas of soil, you know, included in a larger area. And yeah, I don't think they're that reliable.
Two to five acre is the general practice for the '74 survey.
And so this sort of raises in my mind this other thing is if it's, if, yeah, if it's worded in such a way that it's always waived or often waived by the planning board or whoever has the authority to waive it, that sort of hearkens back now to this question about the easement, the public easement we were talking about for trails. I wouldn't want it to be worded in such a way that it was easily waived, you know.
Otherwise, we have it.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of that, especially if, go ahead, Dan.
No, you can finish.
I was just, I was just saying, yeah, that it sounds like it, it has some environmental impacts if we're not following through with that. So I, I would be in favor of clarifying that in a way that's a little more explicit.
Do you know what the, can you estimate what the cost would be of the survey? I mean, obviously, it depends on how big a piece of property and a variety of other things, but most of our subdivisions are in the sort of twenty-five, twenty-seven unit range.
Yes, and that, just as a quick aside, that is very likely to change if the proposed statutory amendment to the site location of development law changes because there, there's a definition of subdivision for planning boards and there's a separate definition of subdivision in site location of development. And most, historically, most developments stay just under that site location of development threshold. There's a proposal at the legislature to change the definition in site location of development. As a result of that, many subdivisions are probably gonna go up to that threshold just as they go up to the fourteen lots now. I would expect, I wish I, I could have solicited, I know some certified, CSS as they call them, certified soil science. I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five thousand per subdivision, that, just off the cuff.
Total dollars, is that what you're saying?
The mapping, yeah, it's, it's become quite a bit more efficient with GPS. They have GPS units, just like they do wetlands. They have, they carry a GPS and they go, they click, 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 and it, it's uploaded. It's amazing.
I just try and get a sense of what we were asking from a cost standpoint.
Right, yeah, if it were fifty thousand, that would be a lot different.
Yeah, but three thousand spread over thirty units is...
For a fourteen lot.
For fourteen lots, okay.
But also, I mean, I think, and, and, you know, I, you know better than the costs, but this is all, you know, if you've got a, you know, site evaluator who's also a soil scientist, I mean, you gotta, you gotta dig test pits for the septic systems, right? I mean, so you have somebody out there with the expertise already. You have to delineate wetlands, you know, these are the same people that do these things. You know, the soil scientist does the wetland delineation, you know, generally can do wetland delineation as well as site evaluation. So I mean, there is a sort of a, you know, it's not like, oh, it's a new thing that you have, could have to do that you're not doing already. It's a matter of, well, the information you're gathering has to be massaged in a little different way, is, is how I look at it.
Okay, sounds like a yes on that?
Yeah, seems reasonable.
So next up was cistern requirements. Currently, cisterns are built when a hydrant is not readily available, but they are maintained by the HOA once that's finished. And that has raised some issues with access and also just their functionality. They were getting, they're not, the maintenance is not being kept up and it's hard to track down the properties responsible, it's hard for public saf, safety to track down the parties responsible for maintaining all these different cisterns around town. So the question on the table is whether or not the council would support continuing to explore options to enable the town to charge a fee to the developer and incur the responsibility of designing, installing, and maintaining the cistern, cisterns. And the, so the town would collect a fee from the developer for the design, installation, and maintenance, future maintenance of those cisterns, but then take over that maintenance once the properties are built. But you did have, there was some questions that OAC was raising about whether or not, sometimes the subdivisions are in a location where having access to a cistern or a hydrant is not as beneficial to having a more centrally located one where we might wanna build it. So there was a question about whether or not we could just collect the fee and then public safety could determine where best to put the cistern in town rather than necessarily within that development. But it sounds like we've had some feedback from our legal representatives, our lawyers, and that we can't really, we couldn't like build a cistern across town. It would have to be at least somewhat close to the subdivision, is that, is that the feedback that I'm understanding, Doug?
That's the general legal input that we've received. So if this is, let's say this is a, a road and you've got a subdivision going in here and this subdivision, instead of putting the cistern in the subdivision as is currently done, the cistern goes here where it might be able to serve two subdivisions. And then when this subdivision comes in, maybe the cistern is someplace here that will, that could help a smaller private road there. We have, we haven't put effort, and a lot of this is gonna be, you know, ISO, International Standards Organization's insurance rates, ISO and NFPA driven. And so before we put energies towards exploring what might be viable to dovetail needs from public safety, ISO, NFPA, and subdivision regs, looking for some input from the council, is this something that the council would like to explore?
Right, but it's, it's kind of a two-part question. Do we, do we, are we in favor of this model that would more centrally locate cisterns on the main road seemingly? Or, and then also, are we willing to take on the maintenance of them going forward? So...
Exactly right.
Yeah.
How many gallons is a, is a cistern or is it vary?
It, it's currently, it's under sufficient water. It's currently contingent upon the number of dwelling units. And I think it's five thousand per dwelling unit of memory service.
I think generally, they've been in the fifty thousand gallon range lately.
So, and, and it might not be on the road. I mean, as an example, maybe the cistern is located...
Right, at the front, at the front of the, the neighborhood, yeah.
As opposed to, to further down, so...
Yeah.
It lasts about an hour level.
An hour, well, it's an hour you wouldn't have without it.
A full blast that lasts about an hour.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
The ISO, I'd wanna look into that, those standards a little more closely. When we had the, the ladder truck committee and we were looking at the requirements for the fire safety here in the community and the impact on people's homeowner's insurance, we learned at that point in time that some of the larger insurance companies actually were doing their own calculations and were not tying their rates to the ISO standards. So I, I, I think, you know, one of the things that I, and I have no idea how the ISO standards would impact this idea, but I just would wanna throw it out there that we make sure we know what we have to design to, because I wouldn't wanna design to a higher standard, for instance, than we would need to, because that would incur extra costs but not necessarily extra value. As far as the maintenance piece is concerned, we have been requiring homeowners associations now in these subdivisions to put cisterns in and fire ponds before them. The fire ponds require even more maintenance and fail more frequently. The cisterns have, you know, almost a fifty-year life. It's a significant life for the infrastructure. They're reasonably easy to install and the maintenance is pretty low. The maintenance is done currently anyways by the fire safety folks, either flushing them out, make sure that they're not leaking, and maintaining them that way. They do have problems with gaining access to some of them because not all the homeowners associations are successful. A fair number of them fail. I know that there are a couple of instances where we have winter maintenance roads where Tim doesn't know how to get a hold of anybody because the association has kind of fallen apart. This is an opportunity in my mind to broaden the availability of the coverage in the outlying parts of town that currently don't have any with, I think, a minimal amount of expense to the town, but some real advantage from the standpoint of, you know, future development in the town and being able to provide fire services. So I, I'm definitely in favor of exploring it further.
Yeah, I had, I had two questions. One, I believe Chief Elkanic has already weighed in on this and he was okay with, was he okay with taking on the maintenance of all these?
I have not talked with him on point. I mean, I, I wanted to start here and I mean, and I recognize and understand, I think, where Council Maguire's coming from, but as an example, if the insurance industry is undertaking their own study, what is that magic threshold for proximity to a water source for the purposes of a homeowner's policy? This is the type of recon that needs to be done. So before we put efforts towards this, I was looking for some guidance.
Yeah, I think it makes sense from a fire safety standard, standpoint to have more centrally located cisterns. So in general, I'm definitely in favor of it. And I think it makes sense to have them maintained properly and if that's not happening now, perhaps it's an expense we should, we should bear. But it, it, it also sounds like the fees we would collect at the beginning of developments would cover much of that, much of that cost. The second, I would also be curious though to hear what chief thinks of, of taking that on. My second question is, would, would we retroactively start maintaining existing cisterns or would this only apply to future developments?
I just, it's, that, the answer to that is contingent upon the wording of the restrictive covenants for the respective projects. I believe the language only allows access to the cisterns. I don't know if it gives the town the ability to maintain. If I were, I'm not part of a homeowners association, but if I were and the town were offering to take over the maintenance, I think I'd sign on the dotted line.
Yeah, right, yeah. Go ahead, Dan.
And I think there is some standards that we could require that HOA would have to meet before the town did that. Obviously, the cistern would have to be in good repair and all of the other, all of the other pieces that, you know, we, we would require going forward would have to be met.
Like roads.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, that sounds a lot like how we treat roads that are accepted as a winter, winter maintenance agreement, yeah.
I mean, it may, you know, an association may incur, you know, several thousand dollars worth of cost in order to get their cistern to the point where the town would accept it, but ultimately, in the long run, it would be advantageous for them to do that. And, you know, you can age these things also, like, you know, if the cistern is forty-five years old, then the fee for us taking over their cistern would be much higher because it would be, needed to be replaced soon.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But if it was five years old, it would be, you know, so I think there's ways to prorate that too.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I mean, I just see all sorts of potential liabilities for the town, particularly if we get involved in, in building and citing these cisterns. I mean, I don't, I mean, that's what comes to mind, I don't know the, the fact of it. But then there's also this idea of replacement cost. I don't think, you know, I don't think the town should be on, on the, I don't think the town should be on the hook for perpetually maintaining and replacing one, a bit of this infrastructure here, you know, for a one-time fee. You know, I, I, and I don't know how you would calculate that fee, but I have concerns about that, that we're gonna be, you know, on, the public is gonna be on the hook for maintaining this forever and/or replacing it. And, you know, and homeowners paid, you know, what, fifty thousand dollars forty years ago? I don't know, whatever the, whatever the, you know, the fee would be. You know, I have concerns about how that's structured.
I think it's just a philosophical difference of opinion really, more than anything else. I mean, you don't, you know, the homeowners association now pays to fix their road. The town doesn't do that. The town, again, you know, I've, I've been doing some more research, almost eighty percent of new developments in the United States now have HOAs as more and more communities try to get out from under what have been expenses that were traditionally the town's. I think there are a lot of problems with moving communal infrastructure onto small, ill-equipped volunteer organizations who have neither the expertise to maintain them or necessarily the, the finances to maintain them too. I think that it's a recipe for a different kind of problem. So it's not an immaterial issue, the, the future costs by any means. But I think when you talk about development and attracting people to town and, and managing those costs, I think that there is definitely a solution here.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, that people are coming to see that, you know, the, the traditional, you know, subdivision which was, you know, viewed as an economic boom somehow or broadening the tax base, that, that's not the case. In fact, that more residential development means higher taxes because there's higher services required. And so, you know, the fact that, you know, that, that people are realizing that is, is being expressed by saying, we don't want the public to be on the hook for this expense so that a private citizen can profit by developing his property. You know, that's, that's okay with me. I, I think that's, that makes sense. So to the extent that we could, you know, get away from this model of sprawl, you know, and more public expense, you know, basically subsidizing sprawl, yeah, I'm, I'm, I think that's a direction we should be heading in general. And, you know, like I said, I mean, I think public safety is very important and, you know, I don't wanna see anyone's house burned down. But I think it's very important how this is structured and that, again, the public doesn't end up on the hook for these perpetual costs of, you know, private infrastructure.
It's only private because the town's forced it to be private. In the past, it was always public.
No, no, it's private because a developer developed it under the rules that exist. The town didn't force the developer to do anything.
I, I see what both of you are saying. I think, I think to Dan's point, having a public cistern is not that much different than maintaining hydrants and having those accessible to the public. And we fund that through our tax base, the maintenance of those through our tax base. But I also see your point in that, you know, the allowing sprawl, allowing rural development is building those structures away from existing infrastructure like hydrants and therefore it creates a need for these cisterns. But I'm, you know, I struggle, I, I think we're just, we're struggling in Gray because we're, we're growing, people are gonna be building houses here and we want, I think what you're trying to say, Matthew, is we need to find a balance between allowing for that development, but in a more responsible way that's closer to where we have existing infrastructure. But, you know, and I think that's partially what we're, we're trying to do with a lot of this zoning. But I, I, I don't see that there's a huge benefit of locating cisterns in a, with, inside a development if ultimately there's going to be future development near that, which could be serviced by the same cistern if it were just located closer to the road. I, I mean, I, you know, I see both of your points.
I think, I think density is a different issue than the infrastructure. I mean, right now, public water in, in Gray is relatively confined from a geographic standpoint. The school district in the town make up the vast majority of Gray Water District's customer base. You took away those two entities and I'm not sure Gray, the Gray Water District would be able to exist financially. So the opportunities for density, I, I think, are limited to some extent. I mean, we had the conversation recently about trying to change the rules for density in the commercial zones, which many of them do have water, but we don't allow that kind of development, that kind of density now. Even in a subdivision, we had, it, it is in a subdivision really, but we had a three-unit, thirty-two units up the hill here that was gonna be on thirty, on fifty acres. That would have essentially been a, three, three-story buildings clustered together and the rest of it would have been open space. You know, fire safety is not an issue for installation in that particular location.
Well, it has access to town water, right?
Right, but, but we don't, but our rules don't allow us to build those kinds of... But, but we don't, but our rules don't allow us to build those kinds of facilities yet. And I think that has more to do with sprawl than, than the issue of cisterns.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that we should be encouraging more dense development where the infrastructure is. And, and, yeah, whether or not it's, one is more responsible for sprawl or the, or the other, I don't know the calculus for that. But, um, you know, I do know that residential subdivisions, or I believe that residential subdivisions are expensive for the public. Especially if we take on perpetual maintenance of their infrastructure. And I think people are, are realizing that, that it's not necessarily an economic boom for the public and, or for a municipality to encourage that kind of development. And, and so I, I am hesitant to, to say we're gonna be on the hook, you know. Again, it, it, it all depends on how it's structured. Like I say, I wouldn't want it to be structured in such a way that we're on the, you know, the public is on the hook for replacement when this fails in fifty years. You know, if it's like a, a road where, um, you know, the subdivision or the, you know, the homeowners association is required, is on the hook for, um, you know, certain aspects of it beyond, you know, snow removal or whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm open to some, you know.
So getting back to, the, the question was two parts. It was whether or not we would be in favor of more centrally locating the cisterns closer to the main roads. And whether or not we would be in favor of the maintenance, taking on the maintenance long-term for those after the fee is collected. It sounds like, Matthew, maybe, are you in favor of one but not the other? Or are you against both of those parts of the question? Just curious, just trying to get a sense for where people are.
No, I, I guess I, depending on the details, depending on the structure, I mean, it obviously makes sense to have a more thoughtful approach to locating the cisterns. With input from the town for the pub, you know, for the public good. And I guess I would, you know, I, when I look at these winter service roads or whatever they're, whatever.
Winter maintenance, yeah.
Winter maintenance roads. I mean, you, there's a trade-off there. We under, we undertake the expense of maintaining those roads in exchange for public access.
Right, but we, the finer point of that is we don't, we don't maintain them outside of the plowing and the, they, they have to take care of their roadway outside of that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so, um, if there is some sort of nuance, obviously, if there is a public benefit to one of these cisterns, if that's a requirement that, you know, it'd be located and available for use for whatever for the public, good. You know, I can, I can see that.
Well, I think that's, that's exactly what's proposed, is that they would be used for anyone. So for instance, if you had a, you know, if, say for instance, there was no public water on Yarmouth Road, but we have the subdivision Woodcock Drive and there's a cistern down by where the athletic field is going to be because that makes the most sense for the location of those houses. If that cistern was at the corner of Woodcock Drive and Yarmouth Road, that would be more accessible to the fire department. And that water could be used to fight fires on currently public roads for people who aren't part of homeowners associations. So in my mind, there is a, a public good for that. Is it, is it a hundred percent public good? No, because it still helps the association. But it helps all the other people in the community that live around them that aren't part of the association. And that's where over ten, fifteen, twenty years, the implementation of a process like this would provide better fire service protection for everybody in town. And that's why I'm not overly, I mean, we have to find out what the figures are. But the expense of these things is not, is not that great.
Yeah, well, again, you mentioned the, you know, the failure rate, or somebody mentioned the failure rate of homeowners associations. And, uh, you know, and if, if that is the case for homeowners association and we're, you know, we're maintaining this cistern, we're gonna end up on the hook to replace it as well at some point if there's no homeowners association.
Under this scenario, what's being proposed, it wouldn't be owned by the association. The association would essentially get, the developer would essentially give the town the money to, to buy and install in a location that the town wanted to.
Yeah, and I'd be curious to know what, what kind of liability that town incurs from, from that.
It's, it's, just to, so we can move on. It sounds like we're all in favor of more centrally locating cisterns. But we have some questions that remain regarding the long-term maintenance and costs associated with the town taking ownership of those cisterns. I know that doesn't help you finalize your ordinance language, but.
We could do a scrouple. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, Marty, you haven't specified your opinion. What would?
I would say the cistern should be on private, if the cistern's gonna be privately owned, it's gotta be on private property. Or does, does, does that make sense?
Well, the question is, well, it's two parts. Do we want to more centrally locate cisterns so that they're not always deep within a neighborhood and closer to a main road?
Closer to main road.
Okay. Um, and then the second part of the question was just, do we want developers to pay a fee upfront to?
A one-time fee?
Well, that's, that could be a question maybe. It's not a one-time fee. There's a fee. We haven't determined what that looks like. To, um, for then the town to then take ownership of that cistern long-term and may continue to maintain it and potentially replace it if need be. And I think that's where we're running into some.
I don't like the idea of the town owning the cistern.
Okay, so we have two with, I'm, I, I think it's a public safety benefit. I, I recognize that it might can, um, support sprawl to some degree, but I think we can, and I would hope, we can address sprawl with how we're mending our density requirements in our zoning. So I, I cert, I would be in favor of both aspects of this question. And it sounds like Dan.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
So we're kinda split without Ian here, so. But it did sound like we were all in favor of the centrally located part.
I would just say, if you're going to, if you're going, if we're gonna enact an ordinance like this and you're, we're going to take the cistern outside the development and make it accessible to other people, it feels inordinately harsh to expect the HOA to continue to pay a fee to maintain that when that's being used for the benefit of a lot of other people that, that aren't contributing to that fee. So I, I think, at some point, I think there's a break point where we're either, yep, this is a public service that the town's willing to support, or, or no, it's not, for, for that reason.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, my, I mean, my thinking is developing on this and.
Yeah, it's the start of a conversation.
And I do see, I guess I do see the benefit of these being public infrastructure. And I guess, and, and, and my, my concern is the, you know, I guess what, what's the fee gonna be and how's it gonna be structured? Uh, yeah, and, and I, I see what you're saying. If it's gonna be part of the public infrastructure, you know, should there be an ongoing fee for, for an individual homeowners association? You know?
I think all the people that elected you, Matthew, are happy you're asking those questions.
For sure, yeah, you're supposed to ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess maybe, I don't know if we could have some scenarios of what a fee structure might look like or what that. I don't know, I don't know how, what, how you might present this so that it's a little clearer for ultimately what it looks like for us without doing too much work.
Sure, and, and my question was whether or not you wanted to continue to explore it. And it sounds like there's a desire to do so.
Yes, yeah.
Sounds like there's some questions that might be particularly helpful for the council to provide some additional guidance, such as what is the lifespan of a cistern? What are the ongoing maintenance costs? Um, and what is the replacement cost, that type of a thing, so.
Would it do to the public safety budget?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I would like some input from Chief on like, what that, he thinks that might look like for him.
I knew it was a complicated bear.
Yeah.
I was just saying, okay, should we be continuing to explore what the options might be and the associated implications?
Yes, I think, I think we have a yes around that.
Okay, okay.
Definitely. Okay, let's get on to backlots in subdivisions. There's two questions here. One is, does the council support allowing backlots in traditional subdivisions? I'm on memo page five and packet page six. And then, does the council have any input on allowing backlots in open space subdivisions? I guess I was a little unclear about what the diff, what, why is there a difference between the two regarding backlots? Between a traditional subdivision and an open space subdivision.
So, I've, I've drawn some examples.
Oh, oh, great, there you go.
Um, so, let's start with open space subdivisions. That's easier then. We can backtrack to this. So the, when O A C discussed the currently on the books residential open space subdivisions, the concept was to, uh, it's currently on the books to allow up to two backlots. A backlot is a lot that does not have the minimum required frontage on a street, a paved, in, in most cases, a paved road. And the intention was to allow, as they call them, kingdom lots sometimes. So you could have a residential open space subdivision. And then towards the back or off to either side, um, you might have a larger lot that would be desirable for, they call them kingdom lot in, in real estate land. So that was the, so the intention with residential open space subdivisions was to allow some design flexibility and to allow the developer to realize one or two larger lots that would be accessed from the road, but they wouldn't get their frontage from the subdivision road. That's a backlot, a lot that doesn't get its frontage from the road. So that's residential open space subdivision. In a traditional subdivision, just drew out a couple scenarios here. I've been with the town coming up seventeen years. I have not seen ever a backlot in a traditional subdivision. I don't know how much is on point in the ordinances, but these are some real-world scenarios where you would see that. This would be in access and this would be in access for these two backlots. This would be in access for this backlot and so forth. And so, as we approach amendments to the subdivision ordinance, I'm looking for council input on, you know, these are both example, possible scenarios for a traditional subdivision. Is that something, is this, and of course, no lots are square like that. They're all, all over the place. But is that layout a configuration that the council would support in a traditional subdivision, allowing, if you will, the, the backlots?
I'm trying to, I know the O A C had a conversation about backlots and I was trying to go over my notes. I couldn't remember what their thoughts were on back. Do you recall what their thoughts were on backlots?
I don't. It, it, even, I haven't seen a backlot on a town-approved subdivision going back twenty-five years.
Why is that though? What is it just?
I think it's because it, it's probably a dinosaur from the street construction ordinance that morphed to the street ordinance in May of twenty-eleven, is my best guess.
A lot of changes were made then.
It was a very, yes, very threshold.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Can you discuss the pros and cons of these backlots? I mean, are there like access concerns, you, public safety concerns, what, what are the?
There, there are often additional curb cuts. You can see that without trying to do this in red. Um, there are additional curb cuts. Um, it does support additional lots. Um, it, it sometimes creates what they call flag lots. This would be sort of a textbook flag lot. I think there, there, the pros are that you are allowing the land behind the front lot, if you will, to be developed and to be used for some purpose. The con is that depending on, this is a, I don't want to go down too long a, a road on this, pun intended. Uh, but depending on the driveway standards and where the town lands on whether or not the town should be regulating and enforcing driveway standards. If you're going to have standards for driveways and allow backlots, that's going to increase the cost of administering the driveway standards for backlot because the, the access is longer.
The cost to the developer.
The cost of the developer and also the cost of. If the town is going to, if the town makes the policy decision to regulate driveway or access standards beyond the, let's pick on driveways, beyond the thirty feet that's currently on the books, as you're familiar with from a recent council meeting, and the town's gonna apply standards, the town's application and review and ensuring compliance of those standards is going to cost the town money that's presumably going to end up costing the person that wants the backlot, the long driveway, additional money. In addition to the construction, the, the cost of the town administering those standards.
And currently, the, currently, we, we farm out driveway inspections to our engineer, our consultant engineer, don't we?
Really?
No? Oh, I thought he came out and did that. Okay.
That, that's a big discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
What, what would be the advantage to the town to extending our control, I guess, past that thirty-foot threshold?
Public safety would be the obvious one.
So, I mean, 'cause we have, we have some minimum requirements for driveways now.
Only for the first thirty feet.
Right, for the first thirty feet. There is an issue before the planning board for ninety-nine Depot Road, which, um.
It's not planning board, I don't think. It's the council.
Well, it ca, it, it came before.
Oh, I stand corrected.
The planning board at their last meeting for a driveway that should never really have ever been built. And, and the homeowner is in a real pickle because of that. And I have some questions afterwards about the, about that particular installation. But I, I think that, I don't think, I don't think that, that the town's concern in my mind as far as driveways are concerned, is, is how they interface with the town's roadways. So for instance, um, do we need a culvert at the end of the driveway so that stormwater will flow where it needs to go along the, the edges of the town road? No driveway should put water onto the town road. We have many driveways in our community that have been built, I think, ignoring our ord, our current ordinance, which requires that there be at least a, the four feet from the edge of the road back towards the driveway, slope away from the road. And I can cite all kinds of new driveways that have been built since that ordinance was written that don't comply with that. So that's a different issue that I want to talk about at some point. I, I just don't see that the town needs to get involved in that because we can, we can address any issue that has to do with town roads within that thirty-foot confines. I mean, Public Works several years ago wanted to have an ordinance whereby if you had a gravel driveway, you would have to put a, um, a paved threshold where the driveway met the road that was large enough to support the car because one of the problems when the gravel road meets the pavement, it breaks down the, the shoulders. So I guess I'm, I'm at the point where I haven't, I haven't heard a good reason for extending our, our control further than that.
Yeah, I, I would have concern, I know you want to say something, Matthew. So I just, I just want to say that I have concerns it might actually, especially in rural areas, increase sprawl 'cause you're just allowing for more and more houses to be squeezed into smaller and smaller spaces. I, I, I don't know. That, that's my initial concern, aside from the driveways.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, yeah, the, the ninety-nine Depot Road, to me, is a pretty clear illustration of how the town does have an interest in driveway standards. Unless there's, you know, I mean, 'cause the town is responsible for providing, you know, emergency services, fire protection and all that stuff. And if we allow driveways that emergency vehicles cannot traverse, then, I mean, we, you know, that puts us in a pickle, it seems to me.
Yeah, I, yeah.
You know, and, and, and that, I think that was very clearly illustrated. You know, and, and, and that, I think that was very clearly illustrated, how there was, I feel, you know, pretty clearly a public interest in not allowing that driveway to be built, to access, you know, you know, a duplex at that.
I think, yeah, that's.
I, I, I guess I'm, you know, unless somehow someone can waive their right to emergency services. I doubt that, too. I think, you know, I think it, it, there's clearly a public interest in, in having standards, you know, for a driveway that emergency vehicles can access.
Well, the driveway standards is a sort of a separate beast than the question here in particular to backlots, right? It's, it's.
It's connected.
I know they're connected, but I.
Connected because it's a longer.
Right.
In this particular driveway, you would have to exercise responsibility for more than thirty feet if you wanted to.
Yes.
If you wanted to require a driveway that, that, you know, public, public safety vehicles could access.
Yeah, and I, I believe we should go beyond thirty feet. If, you know, I think there ought to be a requirement to occupy a house that, you know, that we've reviewed the access to that house, that the town has, and said, we can cert, we can provide emergency services to this structure. I'm, you know, I favor that approach. And to recover all the costs of that through permitting fees.
Potentially substantial to the applicant. Do you understand that?
I don't think I could support that myself. I think, I think the homeowner has a certain responsibility to, to, to do that. I don't think it's entirely on the town's, that it's the town's responsibility to keep everybody from making mistakes and absorbing the expense of that.
Well, to Matthew's point, though, it does become our problem if something happens to that house and we can't access it and it causes a wildfire in the town because their property.
And, and, yeah.
You know, they can't put the fire out.
I totally agree that the town should not be absorbing the cost of that review. That that should be on the, on the developer or homeowner.
But if someone's house burns down and because, and we can't get to it, the town's not liable for that.
Yes, I agree.
No, we're not liable, but, I mean, it could potentially become a large disaster if it's not contained, you know. I don't know. It's not that we're liable, but we are, in some sense, responsible for the citizens and residents that live here, even if we're not going to pay for their house to be rebuilt, you know, it's, you know. There would be emergency services that we would need to address if there's a large fire somewhere because we can't access the property.
So, if I may?
Yeah, gosh, we're going down some rabbit holes.
Maybe the Band-Aid here is for the short term, until we have closure to where we're headed with driveways, we add something to zoning that's on point, that says backlots or in subdivision, wherever both, that backlots not in traditional subdivisions, and then address backlots in subdivisions as an integral part of the driveway standard construction.
Right, because I guess that's where, that's, that's where I'm getting stuck, is that we're talking about these types of driveways in a subdivision, but not every driveway is going to be, that we're potentially talking about is going to be in a subdivision. So, it's really, there's a larger conversation about just driveway standards in general and what that looks like.
There are driveways like this in my neighborhood that we're not a subdivision.
Right.
Yeah, so let me ask a further clarifying question, if I might. We, we do have jurisdiction over driveways in subdivisions, or we don't? Like in the case of these.
It sounds like the first thirty feet of any driveway we have jurisdiction.
There are additional drive, there are additional access standards housed in the subdivision ordinance that are applicable for all lots in that subdivision. They generally reference the street ordinance, which, which has, which focuses on the first thirty feet. But there are insta, to answer your question directly, there are, there are instances where there have been steep driveways that we knew were going to be steep, and they were required to be engineered as an integral part of the review of that particular subdivision.
Beyond the thirty feet?
Beyond the thirty feet, yes.
Subdivision is different than if someone just has a lot and.
I understand.
They're going to build it, then the rule kind of breaks down.
Right. And I guess that's, I mean, we're not talking about that specific instance tonight, but that's where I have concerns, especially as we have a recent example of that being a problem.
That recent example is not in the subdivision.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, is that if we make rules for subdivisions that are harsher than the rules on main roads, how effective are these rules? You know, a lot of our houses are on main road, right? So, I guess that's, that's where I, that's where I'm struggling here. I mean, we allow backlot development outside of subdivisions, right?
That's correct. So, as we move forward, some, maybe, what I'm advocating works for the purposes of moving forward because it perhaps reduces, if we're going to allow backlots in subdivision, we'll be increasing the number of backlots in town, is kind of my point. It seems like the back, backlots in subdivision seems as though it is integrally connected to the discussion for driveway standards beyond the thirty feet. They seem to be connected.
Yeah, they definitely seem connected since it's a very long driveway to get to a backlot, no matter whether it's in a subdivision or not. Well, it sounds like we can't really answer your question without driveway standards, which is whether or not to allow the backlots in subdivisions. Is that, or what was the compromise you were proposing? Sorry.
My, off the cuff, my proposal would be, as an integral part of the forthcoming proposed ordinance amendments, that we on point disallow backlots in subdivisions until there can be closure to the driveway standard question.
Okay.
It's a proposal.
What, what are folks' thoughts on, you know, they're not currently allowed, right, in subdivisions, are?
They have, twenty-five years back, I've never seen one.
We've never seen one, but we haven't explicitly disallowed it. Okay. So, it sounds like we would just be more explicitly dis, creating language that disallows backlots in subdivisions. Are people okay with that until we amend our driveway standards, or I'm just, yeah. I don't know.
I think that's the question.
Yeah, I guess I don't, we'd have to get the driveway standards on the books, but. Anyone have any strong feelings about?
I'd say, I'd say no backlot to go on, because it'll bring businesses, it'll bring.
Well, we're just talking specifically about subdivisions, so I'm not sure. It wouldn't be a lot of business.
Probably be substantial pushback if you were to disallow them in subdivisions would be consistent with historical twenty-five-plus years back.
Right.
Practice. To disallow them everywhere, I think, I suspect, I'm getting tired. I suspect that there's going to be some pushback on that.
All right.
There'd be a lot of pushback on that.
I suspect so.
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I think the, I, I think that we have, I think the public has some reasonable involvement in how people use their personal property. But I'm always hesitant to completely shut the door on an opportunity for someone to, to, to use their personal property the way they want to. So, I, I, that's what I'm kind of bumping up against here. I mean, to your point, it could be a problem, but it hasn't been a problem in twenty-five-odd years. Is there a reason why you're thinking that this is something that could raise its head in the near future?
Yes.
It has to do with ADUs and things.
Exactly.
Okay.
ADUs, and there are some initial projects that are sparking this question.
Okay. This is kind of like a moratorium without using the N-word, really.
Just for subdivision.
Just for subdivisions.
And recognizing that it's consistent with twenty-five-plus years' worth of historical.
Yeah, I, I've heard you. Yep.
I think there was some talk, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but when we were talking about backlots in O A C, and I know we, I know we talked about them, we were talking about backlots, I believe, in the context of ADUs and how if someone owned two properties and they wanted to add an ADU, could they potentially combine those lots in order to increase the square footage so that they would have the proper amount of space for septic and things like that? Is, is, I feel like that's what we were talking about, but I might be remembering it wrong. But then, but then essentially, it's not a backlot unless they needed to create a driveway for that ADU, is that?
I think it came up in connection with the, where we're headed with the future zoning, and if we reduce lot sizes.
Right.
Then if you had, you guys really put me to the test.
With the dream drawing skills.
You got a current, a conforming lot. If that lot was big enough and you had a single family here.
Right.
Could the lot be divided?
That's, I think that is where it came.
To allow for an ADU if their lot was deep enough and had sufficient area to be divided.
Right. That is what it was.
I think that's what.
I think that is what we were talking about, yeah.
But you wouldn't have to provide a driveway for an ADU on that lot, if it was a separate lot.
That's, I think, that was the discussion.
And one of the issues, correct me if I'm wrong, because, but if you have an undeveloped lot, you can put up to four ADUs on that lot, provided you have the space.
I think you need to be in a, to check your growth area.
You have to be in a growth area.
And public water.
Right, but, but that doesn't mean that that scenario, that doesn't mean there aren't any backlots in, or maybe there aren't any backlots in that.
I think the discussion was cre, putting an ADU on its own new backlot, I think.
Would that be an ADU, then, if you're creating a separate lot for it?
It doesn't necessarily need to be. It could be a single, it would not necessarily need to be an ADU.
Right, it wouldn't be an ADU anymore. It would be a small, it would be like a tiny home.
Yep, yep.
No argument, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to get this, the, the, the language straight in my head.
These are good discussions.
I think that, I think, I guess I would be supportive of it. I'm not overly concerned.
Of allowing the backlots?
I would, of the not allowing backlots until we sort the other issues out, provided that we have a way of sorting the issue out in the relatively, you know. I, I don't want, I wouldn't want five years to go by.
That's, that's my hesitation, is if we make this rule.
I think we're committing to doing something about driveways. I think that, that's the way I feel, yeah.
We're not, but we're not making a rule. We're, we're continuing the status quo, it sounds like.
But we are because it's not currently disallowed. It hasn't been, they haven't been utilized, backlots, but we don't currently disallow them.
So, if we disallow them, we're making the rule.
In subdivisions.
In subdivisions, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, because he would be writing it into the ordinance, I see. That was why I opposed it, yeah.
So, I guess that's, that would be my, my caveat. If we, if we're willing to take on driveways, I'd be willing to support.
Could we do, I know we were going to do roads, but driveways are not part of the roads ordinance, or are they?
They're related, but driveways could be treated separately.
But now, you mentioned that in subdivisions, we do have some sort of regulatory hook on accessing lots.
Yes, in, in four oh one subdivision, yep.
So, we can, if it's in a subdivision, we can already get involved in the means of access to the lot.
I don't know if that applies to, I'd have to check. I haven't looked at the.
Okay.
Access provisions in detail in subdivision to see if they would apply to backlots.
I mean, typically, am I correct in saying that if, if our ordinances doesn't, is, is mute or doesn't say anything about a use, then the use is allowed?
I think there are different philosophies on that, but I, there's an increasing, when I started this thirty years ago, there were planners that were rep, that were coming to the planning board. Now, we have mostly engineers. Engineers are saying, show me where it says, I can't do that. That, that's been a philosophical change, I would submit, in the planning profession in the past.
Engineers are not interested, are not concerned about planning.
So, I would submit that there are different, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. I would say that there are different philosophies to that approach.
Right, but our planning board would, unless it was disallowed, would more often not allow it, wouldn't it?
It's not, zoning is not constructed that way. At the beginning of the uses table in four oh two, it says, any use that's not specifically listed in the uses table is disallowed.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
I don't think it's a blanket statement.
I, no, I wasn't trying to defend a point of view. I was trying to learn what the rule is.
So, could you say that again? I missed, I missed what you were saying. Could you repeat that? What, what are we not?
In the, it's very easy to, when you're, when you're utilizing ordinances, it's very easy to look at just one piece. Ordinances need to be looked at as a cumulative whole. It's the same thing as the external plumbing code for septic systems. You can't just look at one line. In four oh two, the uses table, four oh two is zoning. That's where it says, you can do this use in this district and not here, conditionally permitted, site plan, et cetera. There's a provision at the beginning of the uses table in four oh two zoning that says, any use that is not specifically enumerated here in the uses table is not allowed. I mean, why can't, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, you can't put, my favorite example is a nuclear power plant. You can't put a nuclear power plant in the middle of Hancock Street. Why is that? Because nuclear power plant is not a listed use. So, that's.
In our backlots and subdivisions, a listed use?
Not in the uses table. It, it's not on point, which is why I'm raising the question.
I guess my inclination is to leave it alone. That's, that's maybe just leave, I mean, if we're not seeing this as a trend, although you said that there's things bubbling.
It's going to become as ADUs, it's going to be. I would, I, I, I am fine with disallowing backlots until we get a handle on the access issues.
So, just to, to Dan's point, if, if we're okay with that, which it sounds like we are, we also need to make space and time to get into driveway standards with, in the near future, which I worry.
We don't have to, but I think it would.
Well, I, like you said, I don't want it to be five years from now where we've now disallowed backlots and we still haven't talked about driveway standards, I, you know.
And, I mean, in, in my mind, developing driveway standards is a thing we're going to ask staff to do. I mean, obviously, we're going to be involved in, in, you know, in, in decisions about the driveway standards. But, I mean, and so that really, then the question is, when is there going to be space for staff to develop those?
Right. That might be a question for the new town manager.
The space in the schedule is probably five years away.
Right, yeah. Okay, I, we should move on. We spent about a half hour on backlots, so.
They're complicated, though.
Yeah, it sounds like we're, we're on board with disallow, explicit, making the language more explicit to disallow them within subdivisions with the expectation that we will address driveway standards in the not-too-distant future and then revisit that question.
And I will check to see if there is an easier solution for access control in subdivision, including backlots, to Councilor Height's point.
Okay.
If we have that ability, then maybe that addresses it. I think that, that's a really, that's a, as the British would say, spot on. That's an excellent point, because we do, in subdivision, we have that ability. Outside of subdivision, we do not, so. Okay. This whole discussion we've had is all contained within subdivision.
Yeah.
We've wandered over the edges.
We have wandered a little.
As we, as we are.
All right, so the last question you had for just in regards to subdivisions in general was, does the council support amending the subdivision ordinance to clarify language regarding parcel configuration? And my understanding of what you wrote here was that there are some odd spaces within a subdivision sometimes that wouldn't allow for a development normally, but perhaps they should. Is that? You really are, I hope you took drawing one oh one at some point.
It's a little rough, but, so. The, the only current standard in the subdivision ordinance for lot configuration is a lot-to-width standard. And as one of our resident engineers pointed out in a fairly recent proposal, the actual usable building envelope was not that great. And it is, this is probably a good example right there, where, where by the time you take a front setback, a rear setback, et cetera, there, there was not a lot of usable, it's called the building envelope, the portion of the parcel you can build upon. And so the proposal is to add some additional qualitative standards, uh, and maybe even some numerical ones, to ensure that there's a sufficient building envelope for all lots in a subdivision.
I favor that.
So right now someone could build on an oddly shaped lot without a sufficient building envelope, is that?
In a traditional subdivision, um, there's a specific provision in the resident, current residential open space subdivision that gives the planning board the, the ability to require a lot by lot, because those lots are smaller. And so we added, when OAC did that, we added that provision in that, um, the applicant needs to show, show us how this lot can be used for customary residential purposes. Um, and the proposal is to add something similar to that for traditional subdivisions to ensure that the lot is indeed viable for, in most cases, residential.
I think if they're seeking approval for residential use on a lot, then, yeah, we should ensure that it's suitable for that purpose.
I guess I'm confused, why would they even come to the planning board if the lot isn't buildable, I guess is where, where I'm getting a little lost.
It's buildable, but, but it's often like.
Should've made the drums larger, but if you have a fifty-foot front setback.
Mm-hmm.
And then a fifty-foot rear setback.
Yeah, it's too small to build a house in there, so what, why would they, I guess.
You, you, you can build a house, but it puts the lot owner and the builder in a really, right on point, tight spot.
Yeah.
They have to be very cognizant of setbacks and they, a lot of times, many developers do this anyway, but you need to, um, get a surveyor to demarcate the building envelope and. We would just like to, because of the recent increase in odd-shaped lots, we'd like to have additional standards in there to give the planning board a little bit more authority to ensure that there is indeed a viable, a decently sized building envelope on each lot.
Go ahead, Dan.
You're, you're really talking about sort of dictating a certain shape.
Right, yeah.
Not necessarily.
Well, um, if that lot's buildable, then why can't that person build on it? I mean, what's the downside to the community to letting them build there?
I guess there's a danger in them potentially going over the setback requirements, is that because there's working within such a tight space that the, the errors can easily be made during the building process, is that?
It, well, it, with the example here, it, it's a decent-sized lot, but as a practical matter, not much of it is usable and it, it puts limits on the, the builder and the property owner when they go to build their house and put their septic, well, septic and wells have different setbacks, but.
But if, to Dan's point, if they're willing to work within those limits, why do we care, I guess is, to be blunt.
What's happening is sometimes these envelopes are so tight that the, a traditional residential footprint can only fit on one very small portion of the lot.
Personal experience, I bought a lot that, that you're describing and built a triangular house because that was the only thing that would fit within the building envelope.
Right, and that was your choice and the, it's your expense, I would imagine, building a triangle.
It wasn't much more expensive, but, but, but it was my choice, um, and I guess, um, and, you know, this particular lot had been sailed for, for twenty-odd years and no one had bought it because no one thought that they could. And you couldn't put a square house on the lot, which is why it was unbuildable, but I guess I'm, I maybe I'm just missing the point.
I feel like I am too.
Well, I, I guess I think, I've, I've certainly experienced, you know, houses built that don't comply with setbacks, um, you know, and and that creates all sorts of, you know, difficulties. And to the extent that a lot is configured to increase the potential for that.
Right.
I think it's worth avoiding.
Well, but i- if someone builds their house in the wrong spot, or they put a foundation in, it's a hell of a fight, but ultimately, they'd be responsible for moving that.
But do we have to take them to court to move it?
Might have to.
Because that sounds like an, ultimately, an expense that we shouldn't.
I mean, you can stop work on the site and that's the end of that, you don't necessarily have to build it, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, anyway. If I can, the, the philosophy that's driving this, that if the planning board is approving one or more lots in a subdivision, they should be viable for customary residential purposes. And we're seeing that, that envelope getting smaller and smaller and more restrictive, and we're looking for some ability for odd-shaped lots to say, okay, at a minimum, you need a viable, and, and this is, this is actually already the case with, in residential open space subdivisions for small lots, it's, it's kind of the same concept, where you need a building envelope that's a minimum of X by Y.
I, I, I favor, I mean, to me, that makes, this is why we do planning, um, in a sense. If, you know, if, if somebody, if there's a odd-shaped parcel out there that exists, that somebody wants to build a triangular house on, I'm fine with letting them do that, you know.
Thank you.
But to say, oh, we're gonna create that situation by approving lots on which you can only, you know, build triangular, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that.
So, so you're, you're saying because we're, they're creating them from a, they're subdividing them from a larger lot and they're creating the scenario rather than it just existing already? That's where you're taking issue?
Exactly. We're, you know, we're looking forward and saying, do we wanna create these situations, do we wanna allow developers to create these situations that, you know, that is gonna affect the ongoing housing stock and, you know, you know, the, yeah.
Well, can you, just to make it more concrete for me, there's a project over on Jenny Drive, and one of the, and this very issue has been part of the concern that the developer is putting three duplexes in there and they've created these convoluted lots in order to have enough space for each of the structures there. The, when the discussion happened in planning board and the width, when the, and the rule came up about the dimensions of the lot and that these lots didn't meet those dimensions, if I'm remembering correctly, Will basically said, well, yeah, that's, that's in our ordinances, but no one ever uses that. And it's never, and it's not anything that's ever really been enforced, is that, are those accurate statements?
I, that's a Kristen question, I, I don't know the, I know, I know that the lot width to length, which is pretty much the only on-point lot configuration standard that's currently on the books, it, it's come up at least, I know there are two projects I can think of, it came, the, the question came up and there were adjustments to the lot sizes.
Well, in, in my limited experience, a lot of times these convoluted lots are created in part because of either wetlands or vernal pools or some other characteristic of the site that's the developer's trying to, to deal with, is that an accurate statement?
I, there are too many variables, it, and I, I would respectfully submit that I'm looking for guidance from the council as to whether or not, that the planning staff would like some additional standards to make sure that the lots that are being approved by the planning board in subdivisions are indeed viable from a, for a cus- customary residential purposes.
I, I mean, that contain a buil- you know, if, if the lots be configured such that they, they contain a building envelope that, you know, is suitable for residential development or whatever, is that? I mean, I don't know about viable, I mean, because I don't know about that word in particular.
Customary, I, I, we're, I, I feel like we're, like, this is mushrooming a lot bigger than it.
So, it, it sounds like we're, it sounds like we, we already have that standard in open space subdivisions also, is, is what you indicated a minute ago, correct?
We do, there's a, there's a standard, because those lots are smaller, there is a standard that allows the planning board to require the developer to submit a plan to show how one or more of the particularly tight lots in that subdivision can be developed. Where does the well go, where does the septic go, where are the building setbacks and?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think I'm also in favor of clarifying the language because it's already a standard in one of our subdivision ordinances and also, it, I think it would allow for fewer mistakes that we then have to forcefully, uh, implement at a later date, I don't know.
I, I'm not against it, I guess I feel like I need more information.
I'll try to come up with some language.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at this again before we vote on it, for sure. Okay, let's move forward from that. So the next section was specifically related to open space subdivisions, um, first being, does the council support amending the administrative procedure for open space subdivisions to require an exist- an existing conditions workshop to provide input to the overall layout of the project? And this is what you were referencing earlier, Doug, about whether or not we would like to involve the open space committee and other, others at the beginning of a project, rather than going backtracking to identify potential open space areas that are amenable to our, our priorities and our open space plan, um, at the beginning of, of that development, rather than at the end. I'm, I'm in favor of that, makes sense, it sounds like Brunswick does that, you mentioned that in your memo.
There are other municipalities that do the same thing, the, the traditional, at least for Gray, is developer brings in sketch plan with the road and lots already on it. Advocating that we need to back up one step.
Yeah.
Um, and take a ten-thousand-foot view of what's out there for development constraints, let's get some broad brush input from open space committee and planning board before there's hard money and hard engineering put towards that site.
Yeah, I think we've run into that a lot, where we get plans, people spending a lot of money on plans that aren't baked enough and that, in that we haven't had input enough and then it becomes problematic. It sounds like, um, and you noted in your memo that even though it feels like an additional step, it hits, most, most places that have these workshops at the beginning result in a more streamlined review process, so.
It will save time and it will create less conflict, it's in everybody's best interest, the developers, I think, would be very happy with this.
Yeah, I'm for it, yep, it sounds like you've got some yeses here, so. Okay, um, does the council support allowing such develop, uh, such develop, what are we talking about, adding additional type of small lot, open space subdivisions in rural areas with standards? So does the council support allowing such developments in districts such as, um, medium density and does the council support allowing such developments in predominantly rural districts? Such as the rural, rural residential and agricultural district currently, um, if there were a sufficiently deep buffer to roads and abutting properties? So we're talking about residential open space subdivisions with smaller lots, is that correct?
Yes, yep, but, and if I may just, I think this is gonna help answer some of the questions, uh, starting at the bottom of council packet page seven, my page six. Um, I list out four different types of subdivisions with some bullets to try to, uh, put some meat on the bones to provide some context. The first type is small lot, open space subdivision, second type is a, the revamping, if you will, of the residential open space subdivision. The third conceptual type is a multi-family open space subdivision, where you would have one or more multi-family structures on the developed portion and then the, the balance would be in open space. And then the fourth, which is probably an, an integral part of the, the new zoning, just to kind of plant a seed, is a multi-family subdivision, which is a kind of a derivative of what we have now with the multi-family housing. So those are the four different types, and I listed, and I listed out some of the.
Right, and then this, so this is speaking specifically to this new type of small lot, open space subdivision, and whether or not we would la- like to allow it in the medium-density, uh, areas and the, also the rural residential agr- what is now rural residential and agriculture, agricultural areas. I would be in favor of medium-density ones, and it sounds like we are, we kind of already do that in the medium-density district, isn't?
We do the, uh, there are residential open space subdivisions that are allowed in medium-density, Stillwater.
Right.
But that is, that, that's the regular, if you will, residential open space subdivision with a thirty-six thousand currently.
Okay.
Thirty-five, thirty-six, I forget what it is.
Those currently have slightly larger lot size, this would be a, the smaller lot size.
As proposed, this would be twenty-three thousand instead of thirty-six.
But theoretically, people could also build ADUs on these properties going forward, on a smaller lot.
It's gonna hinge under the plumbing code may have, because remember, we're talking, the plumbing code's probably gonna have a bearing.
Right, so if, if they can't meet the plumbing standards, that, it wouldn't allow for that, but just, say if it were a smaller house on a smaller lot and it could support a three-bedroom septic theoretically, they could add it maybe.
Yes, exactly, fifty-five plus or something, yeah.
And I, I mean, I feel like medium-density areas make sense for smaller lots, I don't, do, how do folks feel about?
To, I mean, to me, the, the, the crucial aspect of this is, um, you know, greater percentage of undeveloped open space required due to reduced lot size. And I don't know what that means exactly, or, you know, what the details of that are, but I, I think that's crucial. I, I don't, as a rule. I, I, you know. Favor that trade-off of more open space for smaller lot size. Only, I guess I favor that only if there's a requirement that they be, you know, clustered, essentially, that those lots be configured so as to fragment the minimal, minimal amount of the, of the larger lot, of the, you know, the pre-existing lot.
I mean, I, if we're, I'm just speaking to the medium-density areas, I, I think it makes sense to have smaller lots and more homes in those areas. And then the, any open space that's developed potentially could create future nodes for connectivity and, and things within the greater village area. I, I have, we haven't gotten to it yet, but I, I'm a little more reluctant to do that sort of thing in rural areas, but, I don't know. I know you're drawing, Doug, and I don't wanna get ahead of you.
This, this is the con- concept here where you have a pretty decent perimeter buffer. Smaller lots, less, less cost to developer, less, more concentrated infrastructure.
Yeah, and you're not clearing as much land, yeah.
And then, this would, obviously, all this would be open, would be open space, but all of, most of this could be as well.
Right.
So you have a fairly significant percentage of open space. And, I, I should know this, I should know the answer to this, but that open space, what is, like, what are, how is that open space structured from a legal point of view? Is it owned by the homeowners association, is there a requirement that they? Is there a requirement that they have a, uh, an easement from a, you know, a, a third party? Does the town have rights of enforcement?
Right now in uh, it's four oh one thirteen thirteen, it's the current residential open space subdivision. There are different options. Um, the most common is fractional ownership is how that works. And so you have your uh tw- twenty-three thousand square foot in what I call the individually owned lot. Um and in MD, the minimum lot size is forty thousand. And so, um, the reason that it works from a taxation perspective is because each of the individual lot owners fractionally owns a percentage of the open space. And so that makes it sort of a wash, if you will, from a, from a tax assessment perspective. Because the, even though the individual lot is not forty thousand, the fractional ownership of the open space more than compensates to get to the minimum lot size.
It's like owning a forty thousand foot lot even though you only own twenty thousand. You're paying taxes on a forty thousand foot lot.
Right, but I mean, in terms of, I mean, but then, I guess in, in terms of the u- what are the restrictions on the uses of the open space? How do we, you know, you know, how, that, that sort of thing?
It could be, uh, I believe there's a provision in thirteen thirteen to allow it to be donated to the town. There's also a provision that there could be a conservation easement, as you indicated, um held by a, a land trust or a third party. There, there are, there are other options.
Well, we talked earlier about any future developments like this having a, having a public easement for trails also.
On perhaps a portion, yeah.
Right.
Right.
So there, there might be a trail connection from here that goes across or something.
I mean, I think at one point in time, Mamet was supposed to have a ball field, but I've never got built.
No, we brought that up, I brought that up in O A C, yeah. It's one of the examples of good intentions that never came to fruition.
Yep, fruition, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm comfortable with a smaller lot size and medium dens- if, well, let's just focus on medium density. Because that's the first question. Does, I, what are folks' thoughts on this type of development in medium density zones?
I guess I don't know enough about what a medium density zone is or where they are or that. Again, I'm, I'm remiss in not knowing these, but.
The medium density off of Yarmouth Road. And I believe there is one off of pretty far south, uh Route one hundred south near the Cumberland Line. I'm trying to remember the zoning map.
Yeah, I was just gonna call that.
And, and again.
I, I think of them as what our comp plan has identified as, and I mean, they're probably not one-to-one measurements, but the transition zones where they're not quite village growth areas, but they're also not rural, rural areas.
So, medium density, I'm sorry. So medium density basically is, says if you, there, there are, if you have a hundred acre lot, that medium density says you get um so many lots per, you're allowed so many lots for that hundred acres. Is that what we're talking about for density?
Yeah, I mean, everyone would say, and then there's, you, there are deductions, it's called net residential area, net residential density. If you trigger subdivision, then there, there are deductions for wetlands and slopes and so forth, but
Excellent.
But barring those, um, you're correct. And so in your hundred acre example, uh, we're going from real acres to builders acres, but um because the minimum lot size in MD is forty, so I mean, I know it sounds crazy, but uh for, for very, there's all kinds of deductions. But the gross calculation would be hundred acres, forty thousand square foot per dwelling unit. You're talking about a hundred dwellings. But that doesn't count roads, it doesn't count buffers, doesn't count slopes or wetlands or any of that.
Right, right, right. So then, if we go to the rural, I, I guess I'm in favor of allowing it in the medium density.
Yeah.
But then if you go to the, to the, um.
The rural residential and agriculture?
In R.
The R R A, yeah.
So now you're down to fifty lots. Keep it simple.
Okay, so those are two, basically two, two acre lot size. And yeah, I know there's all sorts of reasons why that gets reduced, but, um, okay.
But the cur- but currently in R R A, it's a fifty, fifty thou- you said fifty thousand square foot lot size? Oh, no. Eight, oh eighty, right.
Eighty for lot size.
But this would be reducing it down to twenty-five, right, in the R R A?
The individ-
But the number of lots allowed would be the, would be the same.
Oh, so the number of lots would be the same, but they would just be smaller and then therefore there'd be more open space around. Oh, okay. Okay, I was misunderstanding.
Going to change, you, the, the big rule in zoning land is even, even with density bonuses, you can't exceed, this is in the N R A, N R D calc's as well as in four oh one thirteen thirteen with residential open space subdivision, even with density bonuses, you can't exceed the gross density because then you're, you're, you're not conforming to the zoning, gross zoning density.
So we're not, if we allow for these smaller lots, there's, say in the rural area, there's still only fifty homes, they'd just be closer together.
Yes.
We're not forcing people to build like that though, right? We're, they, they would just choose to do that and, because they would get some bonuses if they tried to, if they wanted to do open space.
And the infrastructure costs for the developer would be less because the road is not as long, the lots are smaller. And maybe there are potential uh house owners out there that would like to live in a relatively compact area.
Okay.
There's a place, where's that off of, um, what was that one? I think, anyway, there, there's, there's some duplexes.
Okay, yeah, I think I was misunderstanding. I was thinking we were building more homes on the same amount of land, but it sounds like we're not. We're just condensing them into a smaller space.
I tried to show.
Yeah, okay, I, I get you're drawing better now, yeah. Okay, um.
So what is this, what, what is the part here? Uh, I'm sorry for taking up so much time. When we go back to, where is it now? Small lot, small lot, open space subdivision. Okay, we get the minimum, minimum contiguous usable building envelope. Um, minimum frontage, minimum setbacks, and then greater percentage of development open space required due to reduced lot size.
Right, that's the picture, that's the picture there.
The open space has to be more.
Cause they're tighter together.
A higher percentage of undeveloped open space in exchange, if you will, for the smaller lots.
Right, I, 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 yeah, I favor that.
Because you're in a, no, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
Because you're in a rural district and the intention is to not have, if you're going to have the densely developed portion more dense than you would normally have in, in a rural district, then you need, there needs to be a corresponding offset that's in line with the purposes of the district. If that makes sense.
I, I think that makes sense, especially if we're not being, um, I mean, they can choose to do it, they, they can choose to do it a more traditional way also, but if, you know, we're not saying you have to do it that way. And we're just providing this alternative option. I think it also would allow for creating, like I said, I, when I was thinking about it, just in the medium density, but it's also true for the rural areas, you're creating more opportunities for common open space for the larger town also. When you create these future nodes essentially. So I'm, I'm in favor of both the medium density and the rural district, having these um smaller lot, open space subdivisions.
But that, if, if I may, that, because I think this will help with the other questions. That's the, that's the concept, that's the seed that I'm trying to plant is, in, even in rural districts, the, you could do, you can do a traditional development, you can do a small lot residential open space subdivision, or you can do a regular residential open space subdivision. The, the property owner, the developer has that option and there are corresponding standards that try to accomplish the purposes of the district.
Okay. Matthew, it sounds like you're in favor of that also. Dan or Marty, do you have any?
I think so. I have some uh questions around lot size and uh ADUs in these developments.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I do.
That I, I would, I would want the lot to be of a size such that an ADU could not be built on the lot.
I think this came up in O A C too, but I think the idea was if these developments had access to public water, perhaps we would be more flexible with that requirement and, and not exclude. Also, I don't.
Rural residential, that's, there's no public water.
Right, there's not currently, but, um.
Mixed develop.
Some parts of McKinn maybe.
Yeah, that's true because of the, yeah, because of the superfund site. So yeah, I, I, I think we should look into it further, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm not adverse to it, but I, there are some, I, I'm also wondering about the state, how safe is our open space? That is something, you know, the state has come in and they've basically taken over and dictated to us that we change our ordinances and such that we can allow for ADUs. How protected is our open space? I mean, what's the, what's to prevent the state from saying that, you know, you've got all this land that you've set aside and it's too much and you need to do something with that. The ownership of the property is owned, like in your example here, each of those square boxes would own a portion of the open space, but, but that fraction isn't identified in any way.
It is in the covenants and restrictions.
Well, the fraction is, but the physical space is not.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But I don't think this, if the state follows the lead that they did with the current legislation, the state does not intend to infringe on civil deed covenants.
Right, they decided that was a step too far and they couldn't do that.
That's my point.
Okay.
I'm not saying they're gonna continue, I can't speak for what they're gonna do, but.
I'm not gonna hold you to predict what the state of veins could be.
It, it sounds like we're, we're open to this.
Yep.
But we need to see the language that's a little more concrete, how that affects ADU development and all that.
In general, if, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
In general, the small lot subdivision is structured for, uh, be- because of the plumbing restrictions, uh, is structured towards probably not having ADUs. Hence the regular, if you will, residential open space subdivision.
Yeah, the plumbing is really gonna limit what people can do with, with ADUs because they do have to abide by the codes that dictate what they can fit on their lot.
Especially in rural residential and agricultural because you're gonna have to put a well on that site too, so.
Okay, um, I lost, I lost my place, was that? Question number four was regarding multi-family open space subdivisions in rural areas. So this would be a new type of open space subdivision. Does the council support continuing to explore this type of development in the forthcoming new generally rural zoning districts? So in the, if you'll recall, in the comprehensive plan, the land use map identified critical rural areas, which were fine tuning, what that means, uh, and then some general rural areas, which would allow a little more development than a critical rural, rural area, but not as much as a transitional zone or growth area. Um, so this would be allowing multi-family open space subdivisions. Going back to your definition, residential subdivisions with multi-family developments, meaning one or more multi-family dwelling, which is greater than three units, three or more single family dwellings, two or more two-family dwellings, or any combination containing four or more dwelling units on one lot. And these would be built in rural areas, but, so they'd be, I guess, I, I guess I, I come back to my question. When it's a single family home, you have, say, fif- on, you know, Matthew's example, it's, you know, fifty lots on a, I forgot how many he said, he said the hundred acre lot, uh, fifty buildings on a hundred acre lot, was that right? What does that look like? Cause these are not separate buildings, they're units, so what does that look like for in a rural area if you have a multi-family development? How many, how many units would there be? I, I, I don't know what. I'm having a hard time visualizing, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think the intent of L D O three was to concentrate multi-family development in growth zones, so with the exception of ADUs and duplexes, so.
Yes.
I guess I, 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 I come back to sprawl, like, are we putting multi-family developments in the wrong parts of town? If we're allowing them in rural areas, that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling.
So, so the question, if I can draw a parallel here.
Yeah.
And there have been periodic discussions over the past at least five, probably eight years at, at a council level. If these were four plexes in a rural area, it's the same number of dwelling units. It's the same zoning density, they're just multi-family structures instead of twenty thousand square foot.
Right, which is more affordable for a lot of people.
This is the question.
Yeah.
So here, and so I just took my old drawing and instead of single family, let's say there's four, there are four plexes.
Right, it becomes more attainable housing for people of middle income. I, I understand.
But also, could it be more dense, I mean, or less, you know, like you said, you sort of have approximately the same amount of open space in this as the last one. In, in reality, couldn't you actually, without those twenty thousand acre lots, couldn't you actually have it more compact and more open space preserved?
Potentially, yes. Or, or there could be a, a twelve unit building, oh gosh, twelve unit building.
Just one building with twelve, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the. As long as there is a benefit to more, um, or, you know, to create more undeveloped, protected land, that's, that's what I'm looking for, I guess. Uh, you know, that's the offset I would like to see. And also I've shared Dan's concern about, you know, how safe is this open space? You know, can, the, you know, lot owners, and this doesn't apply just to this example, but can lot, lot owners decide, oh, we wanna change all these kind of covenants and, you know, and, you know, you know, draw lines and, and start putting ADUs on this or whatever, you know? So, you know.
Well, you can't put.
To what extent is the land actually protected in perpetuity, yeah?
That wouldn't be an ADU, it's, it's, because it's separate.
Right, there's.
But, yeah, the concern is, I mean, how iron plaid is this open space? For, you know.
For existing or new, or both?
For, yeah, for, for going, going forward, I guess.
Going forward, okay, so that, that answer, uh, because any change to the open space requires a, an amendment to, in a fractionally owned, common open space scenario, which is the most common, I think this goes to both of your points, I think. That requires an amendment to the, to the subdivision plan. The only way that it could change for existing subdivisions is if the zoning density were to be lowered. And for new developments going forward, they still couldn't exceed the den- zoning density requirements.
When you say zoning density lowered, do you mean actually zoning, zoning density increased? Is lot size lowered?
So let's pick on an existing residential open space in medium density. Uh, right now, the minimum land area per dwelling unit is per, the minimum lot size and the, uh, the minimum lot, minimum lot size is forty thousand. Um, if the, in the new zoning, the new M D, uh, if there were a new M D, which I don't know if there's gonna be, um, if that went from forty to. uh, if there were a new MD, which I don't know if there's gonna be, if that went from forty to thirty, then conceptually, they could come back and amend their subdivision because they are allowed, there's ten thousand less square feet required per dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's actually.
So, so that's going, so that, so that's for an existing situation. For a new situation, assuming that the zoning's not gonna change for a while, once we get the new zoning map on the books, they would, a new project would probably max out the dwelling unit density based on the district that they're in.
All right, and then, and they would set aside that land and that would be recorded and
Yes.
and then they have various options on how to, how to preserve that.
Exactly.
But the requirement being that it be preserved in, in some enforceable way?
Yes, yep, and there are requirements for notes on the subdivision plan, the recorded subdivision plan for open space subdivisions regarding the use of the, in most cases, the fractionally owned open space. Partly for taxation purposes, partly for subdivision purposes, partly for conservation purposes.
And again, I apologize for taking up so much time, but, but my answer to the question about the multifamily open space subdivision is I would only favor allowing that if there was a significant increase in the amount of open space that would be set aside over
Okay.
the, you know, the conventional subdivision. Does that make myself clear?
So you, you would only be in favor of these multifamily developments in rural areas if they had a requirement for even more open space that was set aside? Is that what you're saying?
Right, if, if, yeah, if the result was.
Okay.
Yeah, even denser, you know, more, even more compact development and more open space preserved for the purposes of the district.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is you would like to see smaller minimum, minimum or maximum lot sizes. Right?
Um, I, 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 no.
Thank you.
I, I think, for, for purposes of calculating how many, you know, how much, yeah, yeah, yes.
Now what's up behind the houses with the hatch marks?
Those are more, it's more open space.
Like a field or?
Creating more den, more density.
Or, you know, habitat, agricultural fields? I mean, if it's, if it's a rural zone, I mean.
Well, one of the things Doug does get into in the memo is, is defining what the open space is and how we need to better define its use and how it will be built and when, so.
I mean, is that, is an agricultural use or a forestry use a acceptable?
It currently is, yeah. But I don't think many people utilize forestry and agricultural.
It's in there.
But it's, it, but they, it's, it's an accepted use, but I don't know of any subdivisions that do that.
I agree, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but perhaps if there was more open space, they, they would. Um, I'm, I, I think, you know, I'm in agreement with Matthew. I, I think the intent behind these is to create more open space, but I'm also in favor of creating more affordable homes for people that really can't. A lot of people are being priced out of gray and all of southern Maine and probably all of Maine for that matter. You know, you, you, you make a middle income job and you can't afford a middle income home. So I, you know, I think this would allow for development of those types of properties.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think also preserving the, the areas that there's, you know, for the uses that they're zoned for is a priority for me too, particularly in, you know, agricultural forestry.
And these wouldn't be the, the areas we've identified as critically rural, they're the general rural area.
Yep.
Dan, you look, you look like you have thoughts over there. No?
In the scenario, if I'm understanding your drawing there, someone's going to get basically, if they go up, if they're, if they build vertically, that last picture basically encourages that. Un, unlike Dunbar Woods, which is really sort of a horizontal development. Yeah, I, I'm, as, for what we understand now, I'm, I'm supporting this. I'm, you know, how much open space do we need? Is a question that eventually will, I think, have to be answered. It's certainly not anything we're in danger of having too much of right now, but, um. But yeah.
Okay.
I'm interested in learning more.
That's a yes. So I'm just doing a time check. We have, I don't know, I forget. We're on question four of the last section and there were eleven questions. Do people wanna power through given the hour or do we wanna loop back around? Maybe the beginning of a town council meeting, finish up what's left or?
We're here, there's a lot on our plate and budget season's coming.
Right, that's.
All for staying and getting it done.
Till when? I didn't have any dinner.
No, I know, I haven't either.
Neither have I.
Um, I, I would personally, I mean, yeah, I would hope we can finish more than, but I would rather power through. But Doug, I, I look to you also. I know you've been here all day, so.
Nope, nope.
Kyle and Brad also.
I got my coffee shoes, I'm good to fly.
Okay.
Take a break.
Yeah, why don't we take a five minute break? That's a good idea. We've been sitting for a while, yeah. Uh, we're gonna just take a break and then we're gonna try to power through the rest, okay? We'll be back at seven fifty-five.
Where are we at? OS four?
We're on, yeah, it was OS four. All right, we're back after a short break. I'm gonna pick up where we left off regarding multifamily open space subdivisions in ru, rural areas. The next section deals with clarity about common, about the application of common open space in common park areas. So the first question is, does the council support requiring such common park areas with improvements contingent upon the developed portion of the project? So Doug, could you clarify that just a little bit?
Sure, yes. Uh, so there is, in the current residential open space standards, there's a requirement for what I call a common park area. And in many cases, since that's been on the books, in many cases, it hasn't really been usable. It's been swampland, it's been, um, not, not, the, the intention was to have a, at least a small park area immediately adjacent to the road that could be used as a gathering spot or a playground, um, neighborhood picnics, that type thing. And so the, the, many of these questions hinge around whether or not the council supports requiring this common park area and probably to have the developer at least get, get a level loamed seeded area that could be utilized with improvements that are contingent upon the developed portion. So if you had a multifamily situation like this, maybe there would be a requirement that there's a small playground because that's relatively dense. If you had a small lot open space subdivision, maybe there would just be a level area.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm also a yes on that.
Yeah, I'm a yes on that.
Okay.
I, I think that, um, the one, I, I would have some additional requirements that
Okay.
I think we need to specify the amount of topsoil that's spread on this area.
That happened before or?
Such that it's viable and it doesn't turn into dust because there's only two inches of topsoil.
Especially with increasing droughts and things.
I think, yeah, and I, I, and I think the requirement that it must be seeded, which probably would be required anyways, just from all the other ordinances.
I mean, if nothing else, it needs to be usable. I think these scenarios where they're calling open space, they're wetland areas where no one can even walk is.
Where the slopes are.
Where the slopes are severe.
Good for a goat.
Yep.
That's not the intent of the ordinance, so.
Okay.
Then, is this, it's required that there'd be a homeowners association?
I think all of these would have, are required to have HOAs.
Not gonna see a subdivision built without one.
Developers aren't going to.
And, and then it would be the, again, I guess it's gonna be the homeowners association that's gonna maintain this area and.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we're basically saying it's gotta be there and, and usable at the outset, but if it's
If it goes to
If, if the, if the homeowners don't.
Sweet burn and trees, yep.
Don't maintain it, then it's.
I would, I would expect if an HOA develops an area that feels like a, a common usable space, most HOAs would see that as a benefit and continue to maintain it. But I think, I think you run into the lack of maintenance when you get these types of developments that have totally unusable plot of land. Of course, they're not gonna maintain that. Why, why would they? But then, but the other, the flip side to that is that they have to continue to carry liability insurance on all these common unusable open spaces in the random case that somebody wanders onto the property and starts using it in a way that's not intended to be used, so.
But if it reverts back to woods, there's nothing that.
No, we're not.
The town doesn't, is not involved in enforcing this.
And, and same thing goes with the, like a playground. I mean, then you've got playground equipment and more potential liability and all that stuff. And that's all on the homeowner.
Right, I guess I have, I do have questions. I mean, I certainly understand the benefit of playgrounds. I have two children and I think they're of use to communities, but I would have questions around, you know, forcing people to install playground equipment. I mean, if, if the HOA doesn't wanna take on that type of liability, I mean.
To create the area and then.
I mean, I, I, I'm not saying I'm totally against it. I'm just, I would like to see how, what that looks like on paper. I, I don't. I, 'cause I come back to, particularly with play, if it's one thing if it's a field that's not maintained, but if they build a playground and then they don't maintain it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't support the requirement that they have to put playground equipment or benches or things like that, and I think that would be up to the HOA to decide myself.
Right, I think making that a requirement feels awkward, but, yeah.
And I, I guess, the question arises, the, the size of this, of this place, this common area and the question of, you know, what size is required? And is this going to then increase the impacted land? You know, we're, we're gonna require them to convert woods into, into one of these places. You know, I have a concern about that, I guess. You know, like, we're gonna require you to cut down more trees for a recreational area or a common area and put in more lawn that's gonna have to then be mowed, potentially.
I don't think it, it, I don't think it has to be, it doesn't have to be a lawn though, like.
Well, if the HOA wants to build a ball field.
Right, they could do.
Why, I, I mean, why would we prevent them from doing that?
I guess.
It could be a, it could be a trail system if they want, you know, like.
Exactly. I'm, I am, I'm a little hesitant to say, you gotta, you gotta put in some lawn. You gotta cut down some trees and s, grade it all and put in some lawn for, you know, I, I'm not that crazy about that idea, I guess, to say, we need more impact is what we're asking for. I mean, I totally get the benefit of having a park area in a, you know, in a residential neighborhood. I'm a little concerned about saying it's gotta be, it's gotta look like a lawn, at, at least initially.
Yeah, I guess I, I take the opposite on that one. I mean, I think if we're- I mean, I think if we're gonna create, if we're gonna have the idea of a park, uh, the idea of, of having the developer make a viable relatively small, um, flat, grassy spot is not a, a, either a big hardship or a, or a-
Big impact.
A big impact.
I mean, I, I would-
And, and I don't know what the scale is here, it's just a concern on voice.
Well, I would imagine, or at least I would hope, and perhaps we can write it this way, that any common open space that has the intent of being a park for these types of subdivisions would be located closer to the actual homes rather than farther afield, um, within, further in-
Well, the memo talks about sixty thousand square feet-
Right.
For a fourteen, for a fourteen home subdivision.
That's what's on the books now.
Yeah.
So-
Because we're making the properties denser and closer together, in the, in the sense that they're closer together to create more open space around them. Theoretically, you could, you could have an open space that's pretty close to those properties without affecting-
We're talking about acre and a half?
Not necessarily, I-
For a fourteen lawn.
I, try, it's, it, the concept is sort of, and I think I touched on it with the description, I meant to anyway, with the different types of open space subdivisions, so in a small lot subdivision, I think what we did for, what's currently on the books for the resident, residential open space subdivision, because the minimum lot size, in, minimum individually owned lot size in our RA is thirty-five, so we kinda doubled that, if I remember right, and came up with sixty. And so maybe there would be two smaller parks in a, a small lot, open space subdivision. And in a multifamily, open space subdivision, there would be an area adjacent to, to the multifamily buildings that, that maybe doubles as the disposal field for the, for the units. Uh, and for the multifamily in the village, maybe that's a fifty by fifty area that they, if they wanna put a playground there, they do, and if they don't, it just stays there. The, the theory was that it's sort of a sliding scale, depending on the number of dwelling units and depending on the type of open space subdivision, there would be a, a corresponding scale, if you will, for, for the size.
Right, right, and, and if we're talking about, yeah, you know, using the, you know, the, having a park on top of the disposal, an area that's already gonna be impacted, um, you know, stripped and, you know, and, you know, lawn put in, then, you know, that's one thing, but to say, you know, yeah, you know, you're doing this lot and then you have to create an acre and a half of field of, you know, deforested area, and that's our policy, I don't, I, you know, I have, I have a little bit of concern about that.
What, you, you mentioned in your memo, Doug, that there's examples in western states where they have these types of common park areas in subdivisions that are intensively used by residents. Do you have a sense, you probably haven't looked into all their different codes, but do you have a sense for how they successfully achieved the uses that they were intending? Like what, what did they write into their zoning that allowed for them to be, actually be utilized?
Uh, in some cases, you have a subdivision, a circular subdivision that, that goes around in a big circle, and then in the middle, you have this, my relatives in Chicago, they have this, and it's probably not, it's smaller than this, but, and so then you've got the individual lots here, and in the middle is this common area. And so I, I think the, the best example, you guys probably haven't seen it, but the best example, and it's not completed yet, but the best example of a common park area that I, that I think is going to come to fruition is with the, the Stillwater development, where it's right between phase one and phase two, it's right off the road, it overlooks the stream, it's intended to be a gathering spot, it's intended to be a place for neighborhood picnics, it's intended to be a place for pickup games of Frisbee and that type of thing.
But did we require that in the contract zone agreement, that they create that space in between the two developments? Or did that just sort of happen because of the layout of that property?
That happened because it's required in the current residential open space subdivision requirements, which is the-
Okay.
This, so I, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be sixty thousand square feet, but the goal is to have a common, it, it's in four oh one thirteen thirteen. The goal is to have a common park area usable, immedi-, right off the road, in case you have mobility challenges, that's usable by the residents of that development.
Go ahead, Dan.
I don't, I don't pers-, I guess I don't have a problem with the converting forest to field. I mean, there's a lot of wildlife positives to that, there's a lot of, um, it doesn't mean that the neighborhood has to mow the entire, the entire parcel, um, but it, what it does is it provides that small community options that it wouldn't have if it wasn't baked into the agreement with the developer.
I don't, I remember, you know, the parks I went to all had mature trees. Um, yeah, there was, you know, lawn area, but it, you know, I, I, like I say, I, I would be very hesitant to say, yeah, you gotta deforest this area for it to be a park.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't think we're saying we have to, they have to clear cut anything, like I, I, they just need to make it a, a usable space in that people can access it on foot with, without, you know, too much getting in their way of doing that. So, you know, it needs to be accessible to people who can, you know, with mobility issues.
Miniature deering oaks.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, it could easily become that, but when you, when you build a development in a, in a forested area and you cut down the trees, if you leave one or two trees here and there around, a lot of times, those trees are gonna get knocked over. And especially in the first year or two, it, you can go up to Stillwater Pines and see there, there were two or three huge pines that were left, that fell over, and it, it, it has to do with the way that, that forest has grown up.
Yeah.
A lot of times, the, the trees on the edge of a clearing will fall because they just don't have the support of the other trees. So from a developer's standpoint, there's also some liability issues there. In this particular case, the developer of Stillwater said he'll own cleaning up those trees, which technically he, he doesn't have to do. But there are some practical reasons why a space gets cleared and then replanted. I, I, I'm not, and don't misunderstand me, I'm not in favor of, of, of just willy-nilly cutting down the trees, but, um, I don't think, um, the impact has to be viewed quite that negatively.
When we were working on the comp plan, I remember we had some feedback about, um, the impact of clear cutting, uh, which was an interesting, um, aspect, uh, we, we, when we submitted the comp plan to the state, we get feedback from all the agencies that review it, and I, I think it was the Department of Forestry who commented about how clear cutting isn't always bad, it actually creates a lot of, um, opportunities for different types of wildlife to grow and different types of trees, so.
If you leave the stumps and they sprout-
Right.
Then you get covered in, but that's not what we're doing, we're not talking about a forestry operation.
But I don't think, right, but I don't think we're asking people to go in and just totally clear cut the land. There's a lot of subdivisions in Wyndham that look like that, and they're very ugly, uh, no offense to Wyndham, but, uh-
I'm, I'm just responding to this idea that-
Yeah.
The open space or the park area has to be long.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna, for, you know, if, if there's, uh, the opportunity for this communal space and people to use it intensively, I don't wanna be an obstacle to that, I just don't wanna be, you know, requiring deforestation of areas that aren't gonna be used, you know, for that, for that purpose, increasing, you know, increasing the impact of the development.
It sounds like a majority of us, and even Matthew, I think to some degree, are in favor of some, um, common park areas in these developments. We just need to see further detail about what that means for, um, space requirements and, and how we define how it gets created.
If it's gonna be there, it needs to be usable, understood?
Yes, yeah.
Not necessarily clear cut, got that?
Right. Be usable as, as, as trails, as-
Trails, yeah, yeah, gather, some, some gathering spaces. Um, okay, so the second part to that is, if the council is supportive of the common park area, should there be a provision that requires additional area for larger developments contingent upon the number of lots or dwelling units? Um-
Larger or maybe two, you see what I mean?
Oh, like your example where, if, if it's the small lot subdivisions, there's more-
You had a-
There's two, two, um, common park areas rather than the one.
Say you had a, uh, pie in the sky, a forty lot, small lot, open space subdivision. Maybe there should be two smaller areas that, to give closer proximity for, uh, people living in the development. It, it, it should be a sliding scales, I, I mean, but the concept is-
Yeah.
As you increase the, the cumulative number of dwell, whether it's multifamily, to, the small lot, whatever.
Yeah.
As you increase the number of dwelling units, it seems like there should be a corresponding propor-, propor-, tire, proportion of, of open space.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes sense.
And, and this, these park areas happen in the open space land?
They have, the way that it's intended and not really practically applied, except really in Stillwater, is that it's in a, ideally, a centralized location to afford access as close as possible for residents in the, in the development. Immediately adjacent to the road, um, little parking area maybe for handicapped people.
But I guess, does it have some different ownership status or whatever than, you know, like, than the rest of the open space?
No, no, same.
Yeah, it's owned by the HOA, is that what you're asking?
Well, I mean, I'm guessing, and, yeah. Well, I mean, it would, I mean, the open space isn't necessarily owned by the HOA.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
It is, typically.
Typically, right, but you said that there was other, oh, just like conservation easements, but the fee ownership would still, would be with the, I mean, they couldn't convey, I thought you said they could convey it to the town or other resource, like, resource conservation agencies or?
If it were to go down one of those paths, there would presumably be a easement in perpetuity for use by those that live in the development.
And if it changed afterwards, it would require, it's a basically a change to the subdivision plan.
The, the park areas, you're saying, would have-
The, the open space areas as well as the common park area, both, they're intended to be able to be utilized principally by those that live in the development. With perhaps a public trail connection for a portion of it.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I, I think your sliding scale is the way to, you know, I mean, you gotta set aside, I'm just making numbers up, two thousand square feet for every house you build. You know, something to that effect, I think, would make sense anyways, because if you're gonna have more people, theoretically, you're gonna have the opportunity for more space, so, um, I think something like that sounds like it might be workable to me.
I, uh, is there any limit to the, yeah? To the percent of open space that's dedicated to this?
There would be under that scenario because you, if you had, if you use my two thousand figure, and I'm not saying that's what it should be, and you had ten, then you've got twenty thousand square feet, you wouldn't have forty thousand square feet. It would top out at twenty for that development.
I thought, looking, I thought I had a question in here for like a cap size, and, and I, I had the same, I mean, let's say someone were to propose a eighty lot, small lot, open space, is that too much? Kind of how we, if you, if you remember with the self-storage, how we had different pods.
I would say, no, it's not necessarily too much, but I would say then you'd think, you know, you'd talk about breaking it up into pieces. Cause if you have an eighty unit development, it's gonna be much broader, it's gonna take up more space. So I wouldn't necessarily see the need for cap, but there may be a breakpoint there whereby, and, you know, maybe the, the park, and I think we talked about this a long time ago, and I always see where the park needed to be within so many feet of all the, you know,
We did.
The, the houses, so you could, you know, you could, if you had an eighty unit development, you could come up, I think, with a formula like that pretty readily.
So I'm, I'm, I'm having, I'm having reservations, I guess, about supporting these in rural areas if, um, you know, depending on what the, you know, the end scenario is, if, um, you know, that, that square there, you know, we're requiring them to consume a significant amount of that open space into a park, um, you know, or, or a more intensely developed area, I guess. I, I, I just don't know what the-
I think we have to, I think we have to see the proposal, but I think there's-
Yes.
I think there's a majority that's interested in looking into it further.
Yeah, okay, I, I can, yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna be a significant portion of the space that's there.
All right.
Um, okay.
It's not gonna be a consensus either.
Yeah. Let's, uh, yeah, let's move on to the next question. Uh, does the council support, this is in reference to requiring common open space for phased subs- subdivisions to be connected. So does the council support adding language to the subdivision ordinance that requires that common open space must be contiguous as possible and connect with all phases of the project at build-out? So this is in reference to, um, these larger open space subdivisions that get built in multiple phases. So there's phase one built, and there's phase two, or even phase three. In each of those phases, there would be open space that's set aside, and we would add language that those, that the final product would have all those open spaces be connected as possible.
That's not a bad idea. I'm sorry. Having a hard time understanding you.
So, yeah, he's drawing, but yeah, like if you have phase one and two, yeah, he's one, two, and three.
And, and so that if you, the road comes in and if any of you-
Okay, so this is a standard subdivision, I'm sorry.
This is an op-, this is a residential open space subdivision, yeah.
Okay.
So if you've got a phased project. And for anyone that has driven Route thirty-five from Wyndham to Sevega Lake Village, there's a bunch of subdivision, I was the planner then, and it's been standish, on the south side. And all of that open space connects at the back. And so we had Peter Busky put in ones, Howland put in one, but we had their open space budding one another. So, um, there's a back road back there, and that back road goes through the open space for one and connects to the other. So if the lots are here, and then you've got the goal is to have this open space connect with this.
Right.
Developer comes in, I've got a two, three-phase project, bringing some pieces together here. You have your, your revised sketch plan meeting, you look at the overall site, you look at where the open space is gonna be, okay, we've got a big block of open space here, we've got two, two or three areas that are, appear to be suitable for the more, excuse me, densely developed portions of the property. Let's design the overall layout so that the open space for the different phases connects. So when it's all done, you have a, you have a block.
And to hearken back to what we decide, something we decided on earlier, potentially- potentially that space would also connect to any abutting open space.
Yep, so, exactly, so if there were a subdivision. So, this open space. And let's say these were next to each other, there's no line here.
Right.
There's no space. If these two are next to each other, you've got this space connecting to this. Exactly the principle.
Right.
And that, and this gets looked at.
At the beginning.
Revised sketch plan, okay, what's surrounding this parcel?
Yeah.
Are there trail connections?
Yeah.
Another reason for the revising of the sketch.
Right. I'm, I'm, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I, I get the concept, but, you know, in my mind, if that were a cul-de-sac and more of the land in back was preserved, that would be more, um, you know, and then you, you even had the, that, that land in the cul-de-sac as your park.
So you would.
I, I wouldn't wanna drive people toward having a, towards having a long sneaking in road like that. I would much rather see, you know.
So.
Shorter roads.
Right, cause then it would.
I guess that's, that's my, my only, my only thought. I wouldn't be, wanna be driving or incentivizing that long sneaking road in, in there, in any way. I'm not saying that what you're saying would do that, it's just what comes to mind.
Well, and you wouldn't have to pay for it anyways, because it's gonna be a private road, so.
I think he's more worried about. The environmental impact.
I understand that, but, but you can't, you can't say upfront, for instance, one of, one of my questions is, are we talking about connected or contiguous? Cause those are two different things. If you want connected, I'm all for it, but if it has to be contiguous, I'm not sure that I could support that. Cause for instance, in the previous drawing that you had, in phase two, the, the more valuable piece of property to leave as open space might have been across the road. And in phase three, the most valuable worthwhile piece of open space might have been back into the other quadrant.
But doesn't contiguous mean connected? Aren't those kind of the same?
Well.
Touching each.
They're touching each other, so how could you have what you're saying without?
Well, you might have to, you might have to cross the road, for instance, to get to another section. I mean, maybe there's a, you know, a fifty-foot corridor or something, but it's not necessarily a field or, or.
That's fair enough.
Or in Matthew's scenario, it's not necessarily the whole back of the property, because another component of this, which we can't control, I admit, but which we're trying to get to, is when these things bump up together, um, it's not necessarily a bad idea to have the, the, that open space be between the two roads, as opposed to all being at the end of all of the roads. So, I, I don't wanna dictate, I don't wanna dictate the.
I'm, I'm not talking about dictating, I, I, but I don't want to, I mean, in my mind, and I think there is sufficient, you know, science to support this. You know, larger blocks of habitat, unfragmented blocks of habitat have, are more rare and have more ecological value. To the fact, to the extent that roads, you know, snake in and fragment habitat, that's more of an impact.
Right, but I guess my point is, you can, you can get that blocked effect in both scenarios. Whether the roads are further apart and that space is between them, or it's at the back of the property. And I'm just saying, I don't wanna dictate that.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dictate it either, I, I wanna, yeah, have the configuration such that, you know, large blocks of habitat are, you know, or, I want to incentivize protecting larger blocks of habitat.
I mean, I.
And not incentivize more fragmentation.
Right, I, I certainly agree with you on that point, but I, but I think, kind of, it depends a lot on the lot. A lot on the lot?
Yeah, the lay of the land.
Like, you have to leave some flexibility for people to determine where those spaces exist and still use the land with the intention they had, so.
But also, like, in what he's drawing there, I wouldn't, you know, if, if they, if there's a requirement for a park area, right, I'd want the park area to be, uh, you know, inside that loop road. Right?
Yeah, that would make sense where a common park would go, inside the middle of the circle of homes, yeah, yeah.
Um, and, and the rest of the open space that we, you know, is gonna, gonna be there, if it weren't contiguous with that park, I'm fine with that. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, Doug, I imagine these are phase one and two, is that what you're?
Yeah, we could be phase one, phase two.
Two different developments.
I'm drawing kind of what we did in Standish twenty odd years ago, where we had a big setback from Route thirty-five, lots here, lots here. And in this scenario, there could be a common park, somehow a common park area here. But what I take you as my point, my big point is that all of this, cause we didn't have the common park area, but all of this was undeveloped open space. And we connected the two developments or phases, you go on. All open space. And we connected, there was a little back to road.
Right.
Only see on thirty-five, or two curb cuts.
I mean.
And, and why the thirty, three hundred foot setback?
They wanted to preserve the character, the rural character. As it turned out, we didn't do a good job, because we didn't specify what could, could happen in there, and so they made it a stump dump in all the houses right here, got carpenter.
But we don't have that, right, we don't have that requirement.
No, we do not, but.
No, that's just an example.
I would, I would be against that, actually, if, if the idea is, you know.
This is what, this is what I'm trying to illustrate, is that.
He's just, right, the, the connectivity between the phases of, of open space, rather than having the open space be up at the front of the development, and then they build a bunch of homes, and then more open space at the back, and then there's, I think that's, that's actually antithetical to what you're trying to accomplish. Is if we didn't have that, if we don't have the connected language in the ordinance, then a lot of these developments that have multiple phases could develop open space that are, is all split up.
Right.
Yeah.
We wanna minimize fragmentation of the habitat, is what I wanna do anyway.
Yeah, so I think that this language would accomplish that. So, are folks okay with creating connectivity in multiple phases?
Yeah, I guess, see the language, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. It goes from question eight to question five, so I was confused.
I may have missed up the numbers.
That's okay. What's the next one?
I think we're on, pack of page eleven.
Yeah, that's where all the questions are, pack of page eleven was.
Oh, I'm, sorry.
Oh, wait.
I've got.
We're in number six, consider maximum number of dwelling units per structure and/or parcel for multifamily open space subdivisions. Um, so, it says here, if the council is supportive of multifamily open space subdivisions in rural areas, which we said we were, at least until we see the language, should there be standards that focus on minimizing adverse impacts to abutting properties and preserving the character of the, of the respective rural zoning district?
This kinda goes to what we were kicking around before, that if there were a large project proposed, should it be broken up into sort of pieces?
Where someone wants to put a three-story residential building in amongst a bunch of single-family homes.
So, if you go up, there's an, in, as you go increasingly vertical for, let's say, a larger multifamily building, particularly in a rural area, there's a corresponding increase in the horizontal setback to the abutting property. Ratio, if you will.
Which gets you more open space. Cause you're building vertically, but you're required to have more of a setback because of the height.
Well, yeah, I mean, setback, I get, I guess, as long as we're not driving people further from the town road, I guess. Um, if we're, if we're talking about saying, you know, like, oh, well, you, you, you can do your cluster subdivision or whatever we're calling it, but you gotta, you know, go in three hundred feet before you start, yeah.
Well, if we're talking about abutting properties, it would just be the buffers between, it wouldn't really affect the road frontage as much, setback from the road, right?
Well, the, not to disagree with you, but if, if we're in a rural area and the rural character argument, there at least needs to be some, some type of a front buffer.
Sure.
I'm not saying it needs to be three hundred feet, but, um, what I'm saying is.
Can't be right up on the road, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would look.
Particularly in a rural area.
Yeah, that would look strange in a rural area, yeah.
So, I, and there's a balance there.
Yeah.
And, and I favor, you know, not requiring, going further, further in away from the town road, increasing, you know, habitat fragmentation, that's my, that's my phrase for the night.
Should be a bumper sticker.
I think, I think we're amenable, I think we're amenable to seeing some, um, language that minimizes adverse impacts for abutting properties in rural districts, including the road, but maybe not too far.
Cause, you know, I think there's. I think that there is something to be said for, at least considering why folks are where they are to begin with. I mean, you can't prevent someone else from change, from doing what they wanna do with their property, and it may.
Sure we can. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
And, and, you can, but you can create a lot of conflict, and it can take a lot of time to get anything done, and it can be really hard to get buy-in from people to agree to a bigger plan. But I think taking into consideration the current character of an existing neighborhood or, um, or an area of town, when we're allowing for new development, you know, would be viewed as a positive thing by the people who already live there. And I'm not looking to put any kind of development off limits, but, um, I think, you know, maintaining the character of an existing neighborhood has value to.
Yes, yes, but I guess, I mean, we are, you know, as, as Doug pointed out, you know, we, we do prohibit certain kinds of developments in certain kind of areas. And, and that's what we're doing, that's what zoning is about, right? No, no nuclear reactors, um, in my neighborhood.
I lived in a town in Vermont that had no zoning at all.
Yeah.
And it got interesting at times.
Right, so, I mean, you know, we are making decisions about what people are allowed to do with their land, I mean.
And I think we should keep the, yes, and I think we should keep the, and we should impose the least amount of restrictions possible.
It's very progressive of you two. No, it's, it's just that, it's kind of the theme for how housing, the theme for, um, creating more affordable housing, you hear that a lot, create less restrictions, allows for more, um, development, because you're, it's speeding the way and also allowing, allowing for the flexibility for developers to build what's possible. So, um, I think, yeah, we can create some restrictions, but we need to be cognizant of how much and what that looks like in the real world.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, so, I think we have three questions left, so let's power through. Um, does the council have any input or concerns with minimizing the required road frontage for small lot open space subdivisions and residential open space subdivisions, provided that standards are incorporated to ensure the viability of each lot? And I think, this actually, I remember we talked about this in OAC, I think somebody brought it up, was, was that? A lot of times, you know, you can achieve the proper building envelope and the proper square foot for a lot, square footage for a lot, um, but your road frontage isn't always going to be exactly with the, what we require. And so, this would allow for more flexibility to decrease road frontage minimums, to give people more flexibility on how they build on certain properties, yeah. Doug has a picture again.
Extrapolating from some OAC input.
Yeah.
If you don't have a rigid requirement for, uh, what's, what's it, an hour, a hundred and twenty-five feet of individually owned road frontage.
Yeah.
It can allow for more flexibility with the design.
And I guess I would be okay with that, but I think you're talking about shared driveways at that point in time, too. Because the number of curb cuts that, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have a significantly reduced road frontage, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. But i- if each one of those significantly reduced pieces of property has a driveway that intersects with the road, I think that that, I guess I'd have to, I'd have to think about it more, but it, it feels like that could cause some problems. But if two of those homes that you've drawn on those triangles shared one curb cut, that feels like it would be more viable to me.
I think that what this actually does is reduces the need for back lots, cause you can create lot shapes that give you access to the roadway without creating really long driveways.
Like this puppy.
Yeah.
Yep, or. Uh, this one, yep.
Yeah.
I mean, when you say more flexibility, if it, if it allows for more compact development, less infrastructure.
Yeah.
If, if that's the, you know, the flexibility is all in that direction, I favor it.
You guys are just making fun of my triangular house here a little while ago, and now you're drawing triangular plots of land.
The building envelope still has to be, yes, understood, got it.
I mean, you, it, it's, it's, you know, you say here that it would still have standards that ensure the viability of each lot. So, I mean, it would still have a building envelope that was appropriately sized.
You still have to do septic, you still have to do well, you gotta be at least a hundred feet apart for both of them.
Right.
So, I mean, you could put the house in the middle, but.
Road frontage, um, I think, I, that's it, I think it makes it feel like less of a, what I call a cookie cutter situation.
I would agree, it's less boxes.
OAC.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's more unique, like, oh, there's, that house is a little bit closer to the road. Oh, look, that, that one's setback from the road.
Somebody else's backyard, go for it, I'm not gonna stop you.
I mean, if people are willing to build it, and people are willing to buy it, and they wanna live there, you know.
Yeah.
And if you have some development constraints in, with your query earlier, you know, there's, there's some wetlands, or some slopes, um, it gets away from the more rigid, you've gotta have a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage on subdivision.
Well, and if you give the developer flexibility there, they won't mind building your level park.
Yeah, right.
I hope so.
Save costs, yeah.
But, I mean, you said earlier that, that if you look at your hundred acre parcel, there are offsets for those wetlands and steep slopes in terms of the number of lots you can get out of that, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so like, if you've got a hundred acre parcel and fifty acres is wetland, you actually only talking about basing your number of lots on the fifty acres of non-wetland, is that correct?
Pretty, it's, it's about four pages long, but it's, uh.
That's the idea.
You, there are deducts for wetlands, deducts for slopes, there are deducts for particularly poorly drained soils. Uh, there's, I think, fifty percent for somewhat poorly drained soils.
Okay, so this is just, it's not a one-for-one deduction?
No, and then, then at the very end, there's a fifteen percent or the area for the right-of-way for the roads, whichever is greater. So, there, there are some deducts that are applicable.
On the state's standards, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and so those are the deducts, okay? And so the principle that I know it's getting like, the, the, the principle that we applied when we wrote for the current residential open space subdivision is, you have those deducts, because those are pretty standard with subdivision, but you can get some of your density back to get closer to the gross density by the bonuses, the density bonuses. And you use the trail system, you use the public access, you use the, uh, uh, extra open space area. Those are the carrots to try to get the developer to get back to the gross density of the parcel.
So, back to the question, are we okay with road frontage minimums being, uh, reduced?
Well, I'm gonna see the language.
Yeah.
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 I'm, I'm willing to do just about anything to have less infrastructure, less climate impacting development, less habitat impacting development.
Okay.
That's my goal for any of these questions.
All right, the next two deals with, um, density bonuses. All right, next two deals with density bonuses, let me just read this section, cause I think it's helpful, affordability, the current residential open space subdivision standards allow for a ten percent increased density bonus or additional dwelling units for developments that incorporate recorded deed covenants, which establish fixed maximum sale prices regarding the fee transfer of title. Does that mean, I wasn't really sure what that meant, are we limiting the sale price of those?
So, with affordability, and this is, this is the big challenge with affordability, is it's easy to make it affordable for the first property owner, it's much more challenging to make it more afford, to have it affordable for subsequent owners. The only, really, that I'm aware of anyway, the only tried and true method to try to encourage, require affordability, affordability for subsequent owners is to cap the sale price for a max percentage increase by, by year.
And we do have stuff on the books that allows for density bonus for-
Yep, we do.
Do we, for affordability?
It's, it's, it's never been utilized, but it's on, it's on the book.
It's never been, okay, maybe that's why I wasn't aware of it, okay. Oh, well, let me, that's helpful to clarify, and then the second section was fifty-five plus developments, the current residential open space subdivision standards allow for a fifteen percent increased density bonus or additional dwelling units for developments that voluntarily restrict use to those fifty-five or older. So the first question is, does the council have any input or seek adjustments for density bonuses regarding affordability?
And we could get on the shirt tails of what we just adopted with the second phase of LDO three.
I forgot, what, what did we, what did we do for density bonuses?
There were specific definitions for median income, my point is that, that the state, when they drafted the affordability section of LDO three, knows a lot more about affordability than I did when I wrote this language.
Right, so we just adopted that, those, that language around afford, of what that means to be affordable, right, okay.
But do you want to increase the percent is, is one question.
Um, I'm certainly in favor of density bonuses for affordability, but, yeah, I don't know what's the standard, what is the ten percent bonus?
It runs, it runs the, the gauntlet, it runs the spectrum.
Without more data, I wouldn't be in favor of making a change.
Yeah.
Especially since it hasn't been, no one's taken us up on it.
Right, if nobody's used it, right.
Okay.
I, I would be curious though, if other municipalities have something similar that has been used, or-
Okay.
Does anyone else in favor of increasing it or changing the amount without more data? No? So the second and final question is, does the council have any input or seek adjustments for density bonuses regarding fifty-five plus restricted developments? I, I personally, I'm not really in favor of senior housing, I'm very much in favor of affordable or attainable types of housing, I feel like senior housing is a very restrictive type of community personally, but I know others might feel differently, so I'm not, I'm not speaking for the whole council on that, I'd be curious what others have.
I, I, I think there's over fifty-five housing is always sold with the idea that, oh, it'll have less impact on the schools.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't buy it, and-
Do you have data to support the fact that you don't buy it?
Well, I have anecdotes that I've heard, I, I don't count that as data, but, I mean, and I have, you know, I, I know plenty of people, you know, that are taking care of their grandkids.
Yeah.
So that's an impact on the schools, right?
Yeah, a lot of, well, a lot of these developments can't prohibit children from living in the development, as long as they-
Know what I want to.
As long as there's, as long as there are people of the age of fifty-five and older who are in the properties. My problem with fifty-five and older communities like this that are restrictive is that it just, it's, it has the perception that we're not a welcoming community, and also, you need, you need young people and you need families living here in order to support old people, with, you know, older people, you know, like, it's not just about caretaking either, it's like, you need developed community, and the only way you can do that is by raising children and families and people who want to be here long-term, and if you just restrict communities to older individuals, you're, you're stuck with a town that has only older people who's, you know, eventually stop working and don't, you know, there's, there's, they also need services, and I, you know, I just, I think it sends the wrong message, you're not as welcoming of a community personally. That, but that's, again, my personal opinion, not the council's, so.
I, I don't disagree at all, but that's a value judgment, I don't feel the need to make, you know, if somebody decides they wanna build a subdivision for fifty-five and older, I wouldn't be interested in buying a house there, but why should I keep them from doing that, that's kinda where I come down.
Right, and then there's the other question, why should we incentivize that?
Well, right, that's, that's where I take issue with it, I'm, I'm certainly not saying I am in favor of prohibiting fifty-five plus communities.
Why are you, why are you incentivizing affordability?
Cause, you know, there's a need for housing for everybody, not just people fifty-five and plus, there's, you know, the affordability of homes is a problem for people young and old, not just one portion of the population, so.
Right, I don't disagree, but why would you, why would you favor one group and not the other?
Well, you're favoring both groups.
Right, you're favoring both groups by doing it.
By doing affordability.
Right.
Not if you're restricting them from building the kind of community they wanna build.
Well, I'm not, nobody's, I'm not saying that you're restricting, I don't wanna restrict fifty-five plus developments, if people want to do that, then that's fine, I'm just not, I'm just kind of saying what Matthew is, that I don't think we need to incentivize it with a bonus, is what I'm.
Yeah, I understand, I, I just don't think we should pick winners and losers, I mean, I don't think we should give, give away with, to some groups and, and, and not others, I'm-
Well, so, it sounds like you're in favor of neither of the bonuses.
Well, that would be true, but I know that's not gonna fly, so.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm kinda there too, in terms of the density incentive, I wouldn't, I don't necessarily favor increased density incentives for either.
Increased dense, doesn't increased density get you what you want, which is less development in smaller space?
Um, if there's a requirement for, you know, for clustering, or whatever you wanna call it, for less, less infrastructure, if, if, you know, I mean, if.
I mean, that's the only way you would get the bonus, is if you, so, if I may, please.
Well, to, to me, when you say you're gonna increase the density, that means you get more lots for your land, you know, for your given piece of land, and-
Crowded together.
If it's required to be crowded together, I'm in favor of it, but not saying you can do more, you know. Anyway.
So, what would be, we have some things on the books, but that, they don't necessarily need to stay there, stemming from an earlier conversation, if there were a public trailhead, there was an indication that that would get a bonus.
Mm-hmm.
Extra open space, get a bonus?
I, I, you know, it depends on what, what, you know, what the open space is gonna be, you know, you know, I, you know, less climate impact, less fragmentation impact, you know, those are the things I'm interested in, as opposed to, you know, general open space that's gonna be highly impactful.
Well, also, an open space in a growth area is not really what, I mean, you wanna have some open space, but you wanna have denser development and more development.
Oh, yeah, and, and, nothing I've talked about here, I perceived as being in a growth area.
Right, I don't, I don't think we were, but I just want to clar, clarify for anyone watching, like, we're not saying every open space in town is going to result in a density bonus, because sometimes they're not warranted.
So for potential density bonuses, I have maybe, pending language, I understand, public trailhead, extra open space, and less fragmentation in rural areas, and maybe affordability.
The only other one that I might suggest, and I don't know if it's viable or not, but is the, is the, could there, is there any value to a bonus for the quality of the, of the open space?
Who determines quality, like, what, like, what do you mean by quality?
You'd have to write that, I mean.
Yeah. Do you mean, do you mean usability, do you mean whether or not it could be used for agriculture, do you, like, you know, there's different, there'd be different, yeah, yeah.
Ag, that'd be hard.
It may not be worth doing, I'm just-
It would be hard to-
It's something I'm thinking about.
Qualitatively.
That would be the part that I was struggling with.
Because you have to somehow develop with qualitative language that equates to a numerical bonus, if you see what I mean.
All right, yep.
It's an observation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, everything you listed sounds good, but I think we, yeah, well, it sounds like some of us are maybe iffy on the affordability bonus and the open space bonus, and then, I don't know, I know the, has anyone used the fifteen percent density bonus for fifty-five plus communities, has that been used? I know you said the affordability one hasn't been.
Nope.
I would be in favor of just taking that off if it's not being used, but I don't know what others.
Trail network's the most popular.
The trail network.
Cause it's an easy, it's a, it's a gimmick, you put a little trail in, and you get some one or more units.
Right. What are, how do others feel about taking the fifty-five plus one?
I'm fine with taking that out.
Uh, yeah, you can take both.
But then we'll, you know, come back to the affordability one and open space.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, the idea of making the affordability go beyond the first lot sale makes a lot of sense to me.
It does.
Uh, you know, like, I, I favor that idea, but I question, I mean, I, I just, I question the, you know, the, the, you know, the deed restrictions would have to be very clearly enforceable by some authority.
Yeah.
However that, you know, however that works, but, and I don't know, does the town wanna get involved in monitoring that in perpetuity or?
I've, I'm inclined at this juncture, given the lengths that the state went to, to include the details that they did in the affordability with the new state statute, to lean on that and get away from everything that we have on the books.
Yeah, I'm not sure tying it to deed covenants long-term makes sense, because, I mean, some, what's affordable now could be very different than what's affordable ten, fifteen years from now, so, you know.
We need the state model, I think.
Right, yeah.
Agree.
Okay, well, does anyone else have final thoughts? No, okay, Doug, thank you for all this work, and I, and Kristen and everyone on your staff, I know this was a lot to put together.
Tough questions, I appreciate the input.
Have your time tonight.
Yeah, just a final question for you, I know that technically it's mandated, we're supposed to have this implemented by January first, but I'm not sure, given the thirty-day, it has to be thirty day, it, it becomes effective thirty days after we vote, so, and it's not on the December fifth agenda, so, I don't know when you wanna see it up for a vote again, I know you need to work on the language and all that, so, we're not gonna make that January first deadline, but I think a lot of municipalities are not even close to making that deadline, so we're not alone.
Well, council, I need to kind of regroup to see the timeline, I mean, the, I suppose you could emergency it, I don't know, if that's something.
I don't, I don't know if we need to, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I, they're, everybody's struggling with getting, I think, I think, I said this before, I think we're much farther along than most municipalities, I know a lot of them are still working on ADUs and we're, we did that almost a year ago, so.
I would view this deadline as a speed limit, you know, is, is, is there a cop up ahead?
No.
That's gonna, that's gonna determine whether I comply with the speed limit or not, or it's gonna have a big influence, and I don't think the state is gonna, you know, is, is sitting in their cruiser waiting to bust us for missing the deadline.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I don't, I don't wanna rush it either, I wanna make sure we do it right.
Yes, you're much more important.
Yeah.
And my assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the council, is to focus on small lot, open space subdivisions and the, what I call the regular open space subdivisions, and push the multifamily portion out to be an integral part of the new zoning discussions.
Um, well, are you, is, are those not a requirement of aligning with LD O three, or like, because we just talked, I mean, we just talked about multifamily quite a bit tonight, and I thought we had aligned around that to some degree.
We can, I guess, I, I'm trying to remember if the multi, multifamily subdivision, I'll, I'll have to, I-
Okay, well, you have, well, is that the final definition, you have multifamily subdivision, oh, that's for, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you were talking about multifamily open space subdivisions this evening.
Yes.
And right now, you're referencing what you've defined as multifamily subdivisions.
So we-
And those would be located in growth areas for future zoning districts, yes, I think we can push that off, yeah, cause that is a lot, that's gonna be determined, a lot of that's gonna be affected by how we define our comprehensive plan zones more formally, so, I think, I think that makes, that makes sense.
Cause we have, we have performance standards, they're a little bit dated and they need to be adjusted, but we have on the books multifamily development standards on the books as a result of the second phase of them.
Right.
And so, if we're trying to get something on the books, my assumption was, for the, the major impediment is the single family restriction in the current residential open space subdivision, so that's where I was headed, to focus on small lot, open space subdivision and-
And multifamily open space subdivisions, you'll be working on that too, right?
I was thinking regular open space, but, I'll, I'll look into the multifamily.
Okay, all right. I don't think we're talking about multifamily and growth districts, we're just talking about the ones we talked about tonight, but, where you have the drawing there with the two buildings and the two.
That, I, I need to, it's too late, it's been too long a day.
That's fine.
I need, I need to regroup.
Okay, yeah. Do you feel like you would like to have another workshop after you do this, or do you?
I don't think, I guess what I would, the path that I would advocate would be to come up with some more detailed bullets similar to that, which I did on my page six and seven, and come back, and with, with more detailed bullets for the most immediate subdivisions that need to be addressed.
Okay, but in a workshop?
Probably.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking, all right.
But put some more, as Deb would say, meat on the bones.
Okay, sounds good, all right, we'll work out the, what that means for the timeline later. All right, we are adjourned at nine o'clock PM, thanks for hanging in there, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
I feel like I did like seventy-five percent of the talking tonight, and I apologize for that.
That's okay, we all had a lot to say, all right, good night, everyone.
All right, our next meeting, next Tuesday night.